Good evening, everyone, and welcome. I'd like to call this meeting of the Bloomington City Council to order on Monday, July 26, 2021. We'll start our meeting, as we always do, with the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would please stand and join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Once again, good evening and welcome to the folks here in the council chambers. Welcome to everybody watching at home and online. Thank you for being with us this evening. We, as we get into our agenda here, we will start first with our roll call of council members. Ms. Eckelberger.
Baloga.
And I believe Councilmember Baloga is ill this evening. I don't think he's going to be joining us. We were waiting, but I don't think he's going to make it.
Okay. Carter.
Present.
Coulter.
Present.
Lohman.
Here.
Martin.
Martin.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Mayor Bussie.
Here. We have six of the seven members of the Bloomington City Council present. We have a forum, a quorum, excuse me. Item three is the approval of our agenda. I did not have any changes passed on to me, council. Do we have any changes, additions, subtractions of our agenda this evening? Hearing none, I would move approval of our agenda for tonight.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Councilmember Lohman to approve tonight's agenda. Hearing no further discussion, Ms. Eckelberger.
Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
Lohman.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Bussie.
Aye. Motion carries six zero. We have an agenda. We'll move on to item four on our agenda, which is the public comment period. It's a twenty-minute period at each council meeting for members of the public to address the council on items not on the agenda. And as we have done in the past, we will start with our response to prior meetings' public comments, item 4.1. Mr. Verbrugge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Good evening. At our previous council meeting, we had three residents that addressed the council. Amber Mathwig asked the city to act in response to the anticipated heat wave that was forecast a couple of weeks ago, which we're in the midst of right now, and suggested that the city needed to be doing more to get, to raise awareness and to make sure that folks who were particularly vulnerable to the heat were being provided services or information about where they could be safe. So I just wanted to follow up and share that last, last week, the city had already been in the middle of preparation for this. As a matter of fact, our emergency management coordinator and our public health administrator, so the city put together communications for residents regarding extreme heat. The city has heat-related information on the city's website homepage with a link to the webpage news. Information was pushed out via our Twitter and our Facebook and cable television on the dates of July 22 through July 24. The mayor mentioned safety tips in his council minute video, which was shared on Facebook and Twitter, YouTube, and the council minute e-subscribe list that was sent out last Wednesday. In addition to the standard city communication channels, Community Outreach and Engagement Division shared the information with faith communities and community leaders and multi-unit housing network members. So we also made sure that the information was translated in other language. And this is pretty standard when we have this kind of a heat wave that is forecasted. Our emergency management plan gets kicked into place, at least for preparations, and we start the communications right away. So appreciate that our staff was already taking steps and making sure the community is safe, and appreciate Ms. Mathwig for her concern. Mr. Michael Picard was with us a couple of weeks ago and asked a question about, again, this is related to damage that occurs off of our golf course property that is caused by golfers, and asked the question how it's handled when neither the homeowner or the course can identify the golfer that caused the damage. In that circumstance, if a resident sustains damage to their property and contacts the golf course within a short period of time after the damage is incurred, staff does, they make their best efforts to help the resident identify the golfer. Mr. Picard's question is a good one, though. What happens if we can't do that? So in addition to providing the assistance, the golf course staff will ask if they'd like a claim form to file a claim against the city. If a claim is filed and denied, the resident would be encouraged to file a claim with their personal insurance company. And Councilmember Nelson asked Mr. Picard about that at our last meeting. Depending on the insurance company's operating procedures, the insurance company may file what's called a subrogation claim against the city. And if we do receive a subrogation claim, the city would treat it the same way we do any other claim. We'd submit it to the League of Minnesota City's Insurance Trust, which is our insurance provider, and turn it over for investigation liability determination. And then they would work with the, with the private insurance to work that out if there is any sort of settlement. So not much different than what has occurred to date, except that in this case, the person who had the damaged property hasn't submitted to their own insurance. And if they do, their insurance may want to talk to our insurance, and we'd be happy to facilitate that with our risk manager. And then finally, Mr. Andrew Thule commented about the problem of the abandoned carts up and down American Boulevard and also on Lyndale and Nicollet. These are shopping carts that are straying from their homes and being left out in public rights-of-way. As I responded to Mr. Thule, you know, this continues to be a challenge, and I think we all agree it's unsightly. Our staff has not collected any carts since this spring. We had this issue come up during the winter and again earlier this summer, but we haven't collected any since this spring. We've received two complaints since then and forwarded those to the retailers to pick up their carts, which they did. So there isn't anything in our code specific to carts or to this type of situation. So Mr. Thule had suggested in a subsequent email to us that we maybe look at a new ordinance or some other approach, some sort of a fine for the retailers for allowing their carts to be taken off property and left. So we do have a similar process for how we collect illegal signs, and those signs often are displayed or end up in our rights-of-way. We often go around and collect those and bring them back here, and then we notify the people who own those signs that they can come and get them because those things have value. Well, in this case, carts certainly have value. We could take a similar approach where we actually would round up the carts and then hold them, and then in return, we would charge a fee for the retailers to come pick those up and have them released because, again, the carts have value, right? And so we can certainly look at some sort of a monetary incentive for them, as it were, to not let their carts go wandering. It does become a little bit of a, of a resource issue for us, staff resource issue, and who we are going to assign to make those pickups and how often. So that's something we'll, we'll have a conversation at the staff level to see what the appropriate response level might be, and we'll follow up after we have that discussion. That is the response to public comment, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Verbrugge. A question on that. I know that signs are one thing, storing signs are one thing, but carts actually take up space. So in addition to a retrieval fee, can there be a
Holding fee?
A holding fee for the carts that we
Yeah, we would have to figure out what the basis is for the fee, but we can, we can certainly do that as part of the cost of providing the service.
Very good. Thank you. Council, any questions? Councilmember Lohman?
Thank you, Mayor, Manager. A little question about Mr. Picard's issue with the golf piece. Are we still looking into what other cities do with respect to their golf, you know, their setups with that in terms of folks? Are we still looking into that, or have we gotten nowhere on that?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember Lohman, I had previously responded that the information that I received from colleagues is they have a practice that is basically the same as ours. None of them had written policies that they could share. And so I don't have anything that I can provide to Mr. Picard that says this is how others do it, except the assurance from other city managers or other parks and rec directors that that's how they administer it.
Thanks for clarifying that. And then just one, one other last question. I know that during his statements during the last time he was here, he had mentioned about the netting around the different golf courses. Have we checked to see what the standards are around other golf courses in other municipalities in terms of what they're doing around netting? And have we explored trying to expand our, our netting at all around our golf course?
Have not checked with other courses to see if they have a standard. A lot of it just depends on the circumstances of where the course is located in proximity to other properties. So I think that each course is going to have just individualized circumstances. Regarding whether we would do that at our facility, we have not costed out what that would, what that kind of an improvement would be.
Thank you. You know, given these particular circumstances, I wonder if we want to, may want to consider that. I don't know what the standards are. You know, I think about Major League Baseball in terms of, you know, it took them a while before they made the, made the changes in terms of expanding those nettings around there. And I don't know if that is the best way in order to get at that, but I would look to you and to staff to try to see if there's a way that we can try to, you know, minimize it. I'm not aware of, of any other cracked windshields like that, but I haven't been looking into it. But certainly, since Mr. Picard has come before us many times now, it makes me think, you know, I have some questions about this in terms of trying to rectify the situation, trying to give our residents the best opportunity possible.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember Lohman, maybe the best time is to come back under the policy issues and updates and have a conversation if staff wants to give that direction.
Council, any additional questions? Seeing none, I will open up tonight's public comment period. As I said, it's a twenty-minute period at East Council Meeting where we invite members of the public to speak before the council for up to five minutes, and we limit it to five minutes, as you can see by our, our clock here that Ms. Wilson will be keeping on, on all the speakers. Questions from the council will be for clarification only. This isn't a time for problem solving or reacting to comments. There's no back and forth, per se. Primarily, it will be an opportunity at our next council meeting for Mr. Verbrugge to answer any questions or respond, what this opportunity is for us to listen to, to any comments or concerns that folks have. So I will open up tonight's public comment period. We have two people who signed up ahead of time, Mr. Jeff Prager and Mr. Mike Picard. I also want to tell folks who are watching, we are still accepting folks calling in. If you prefer to call into the public comment period, you could still do that. Maybe Grant would put the phone number up, but we still do have the opportunity to receive phone calls and take public comment in that way, both in the public comment period and any public hearings that we're holding as well. So please do keep that in mind. So, Mr. Prager, if you'd like to come forward. Are you with us this evening, Mr. Prager? I do not see Mr. Prager coming forward. We'll hold his spot in line here, and we'll move on to Mr. Picard. Mr. Picard? Good evening. If you could state your name and sign in, you know the drill now.
It's Mike Picard. I've never signed in. I thought I was on the agenda, so, but I'll, I'll do that.
Thank you.
You're trying to fluster me, huh? The, okay. At the last council meeting, after my comments, Councilmember Nelson asked me if I had contacted my insurance company about the windshield of my truck being broken by a golf ball. I have not. Let me explain why. Excuse me. My father-in-law used to live on the perimeter of New Hope Village Golf Course owned by the city of New Hope. I remember two different times when he and my mother-in-law came home to find windows broken, glass on the floor, and a golf ball in their living room, one of the times I saw after we returned from dinner. Unless I am recalling it wrong, he contacted the golf course and they paid for the damage. Eventually, they installed netting along the fence line. If they had not paid for the damage, I am sure I would have heard about it for years. Based on my father-in-law's experience and the fact that I never signed any documents or closing related to assumed risk, I really do not think, did not think about damage at all when I moved in. Back in way being, back in May, being told by Mr. Hanson that is Dwan's policy that as a homeowner living near a golf course, not only am I 100% responsible to tell him which of his paying customers hit the ball, but even with identification, Dwan has absolved the self of all responsibility. There is nothing he could do. The end of the phone call was the end of the situation. No one bothered to come to look at the damage, nor did they even pretend to care. This made my Irish blood boil. If I contact my insurance company, I would be passing on to them a claim for damage I do not feel responsible for, nor do I feel my insurer should pay. Before retiring, I taught high school science. Every school year, I had students who cheated. Every time you cheat, there is a chance of being caught. Now that is a good example of assumed risk. As a point of pride, I will state I always caught cheaters. When I caught a student cheating, I would call the parents. They would talk to the student who would invariably come in and apologize. We moved forward, but I also had parents who wanted an FBI investigation and actually thought I should commend their students for exposing a flaw or being so creative. Those were very trying and tiring situations that just dragged on. My broken windshield is a very trying and tiring situation. Do we need an FBI investigation to sort this out? During the hearing on the zoning change a few weeks ago, the question was asked, what would happen if a resident thought the business was not in compliance? The answer was to contact this particular unbiased person who would mediate between the resident and the business. Who is the unbiased go-between in my situation? Even though I think the mayor and city council members are overseers of the city of Bloomington-owned business, you seem cool to the idea of dressing this with management, and you do not seem to agree with me that you are overseers. My impression is the city manager is biased towards Dwan's management. If Dwan starts paying for damages to adjacent homeowners' property or starts installing expensive netting in the areas of the most errant shots, he will be under pressure to find ways to generate additional funds to pay for these expenses. Even though there seems to be no justification for the policy, I would guess that the next neighbor to call with damages will hear the same assumed risk talk I had. Your insurer was a potential unbiased person. As I showed you in the letter I received from them, denying my claim, they do not pay out for damages unless caused by a negligent employee. My claim was not denied on merit. My question is, who is the unbiased person I should contact? I disagree with the city of Bloomington-owned business assumed risk policy. Who is the person that will be neutral between me and the club's management, or does your business really have absolute immunity from paying for damages caused by your paying customers? My second question is, how many calls from neighbors with damages does Dwan receive per year? What would be the total cost per season if these damages were paid? Is there a written record of past calls from neighbors with damage to their property? And I just, real quickly, today I received an email from the city manager suggesting I contact Amy Larson. I will do that. A quick thought, if my claim was turned down because Dwan is not insured for damages caused by its paying customers, why would a subrogation claim for my insurer be paid? Would they not get the same response I received? And then last, my last, last time I was here, I asked a question, are there covenants, signed covenants by the neighbors, that show that assumed risk is in writing? And that, that was not answered this time. I asked that the last, last council meeting.
And we will get you that answer next time, Mr. Picard.
Okay, thank you.
Didn't recall that. Thank you. Thanks for your comments. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak at public comment period this evening?
Good evening, Mr. Thule. Good evening. Andy Thule coming back at you guys again. I just wanted to, we had, we had a really successful Back to the Blue event here on Sunday. So I formally invited the council, the entire council, city manager, mayor, and I did receive responses from five out of, out of seven of the, of the council members. So if I could get the overhead real quick, I just want to grab that with you, you guys quick.
Grant, could we have the overhead, please? Thank you.
So one of the council members, Mr. Martin, actually, we, I invited all the council, you know, a while back to come to the Back to the Blue to support our Bloomington police. The one happens to be up for election, Mr. Martin, he actually came in a day late. So if you see down here, I actually replied with another email. It says I have two council members yet to reply. And Mr. Martin happens to be in my district, so it has spoken about how we can just email him and get a quick email back. If you look at the date here, it's the 22nd. Took him all the way to the 26th, which is actually this morning, you know, to get back to us to let us know. He wasn't at Pine and Iron Attending. That would have been nice to know that, you know, before the fact. So this guy's up for election. So seventh pillar of transparency and engagement. Mr. Martin, get back to us. We expect that from an elected leader. So thank you. Mr. Lohman, I did thank you, and we talked in the hall. So I appreciate the handshake on the way in, but he was a no-show, no, no response. So we do expect people to email back. So that's from the public. So another thing I want to bring to attention, I don't know if anybody got this, it looks like it's a, an event for energy and transportation, and it's at the Four Playlots, Efa, or Efa Playlot, Oxborough, Smith Park, and Fenleyson Park. And it looks like the city did a survey here, and it's going to be around energy and transportation. And so if you look at this, it's, it was, it came out, and I don't know if this was a city survey, and I'd like Mr. Manager to reply back if the survey was actually done by the city, or if it was done by an outside consultant. I did sign up for this. So it has a few flaws here. So if we're doing energy and transportation surveys, and it looks like it's more targeted, I'd say in the east side of town, but out of 84,000 people, they're only allowing seven people per park, so that's 28 people, to come up with some kind of a survey around energy and transportation. So I'd like to see that broadened out a little bit, but it looks like people get a $20 gift card. Now, I signed up for this. It took me a little bit of time to sign up for it, and I'll tell you why. I don't know if you guys know this or not, but, well, we're listening is on the other side here. But when I went to sign up for it, a lot of people jump online to sign up. And so I tried to go to the Let's Talk, bloomington.gov/transportenergy. Whoever did this survey, that link is, was not found whatsoever. So I Googled it, I looked for it. And so anyway, it's supposed to have bloomingtonmn.gov, right? So there's a, there's a boo-boo on that. So if it's your, if it's your people that you're paying to do this, tell them to do a better job, you know, on surveying. I think the survey should be more broad in perspective, you know? I did sign up for this, and I talked to the, the lady here at the phone number. She was very receptive. She was great on the phone, very professional, and I did sign up for this. So I want to know, like I said, who did the survey, how much the survey costs, and I want to know where that $20 gift card is coming from. That's pretty sweet, right? Is that coming out of taxpayer dollars, or is it, did Cub Foods throw that in the bank? Or let me know where that's coming from. And also, like I said, it's not a broad enough survey, but then the, the survey itself, I want to know what's being done with the, the data, I guess, around this. So what's the initiative here? Is this green energy? Is this bikes, electric cars? And I would, and I did talk to him a little bit about it, and it looks like this, this, as far as energy, it looks like insulation. And I know there's a green initiative to make homeowners come up to compliance. I assume this is probably what this is about, but again, I'd like to see this be a broader perspective on the, on the survey. So, so thank you guys very much.
Thank you, Mr. Thule. Anyone else to speak at our public comment period tonight?
Good evening, Mayor Bussie.
Good evening, and welcome.
City Council. I became aware
Again, excuse me, if you could just, and, and let us know your name and sign in when you can do it
I'm sorry, yes.
When you're done, please. It's fine.
Barb Schneider. I became aware of an email that you, Mayor Bussie, sent to, it was Andy, a resident who personally invited you to the Back to the Blue rally yesterday in honor of the Bloomington police officers. And you wrote, I quote, "Throughout my time as mayor and city council member, I have strongly and consistently supported the Bloomington police in word and action and will continue to do so. What I won't do is be a part of an event that is in any way associated with a group like Act for America that has a well-documented history of Islamophobia and association with white supremacist and racist organizations." So first of all, I want to thank you for your unfailing support of our officers. Of course, citizens expect that, but I'm, it's gratifying that you put it in print, and I appreciate that. I do think that this organization, Act for America, is unfairly vilified. So with regard to them, your email references the Southern Poverty Law Center as one source for your information. Perhaps you're not aware that according to an online article in the Washington Times dated October 7, 2018, and I quote, "The Defense Department has become the latest federal agency to sever ties with the Southern Poverty Law Center, an Alabama-based, hard-left group whose hate map is being used against Christian groups." According to the article, the FBI in 2014, and also the Pentagon, eliminated the Southern Poverty Law Center from their resource list. Another source you cited in your, what I believe, an unfair characterization of Act for America is the Center for American Progress, defined by the All Sides Media Bias Center ratings as left-leaning. Some characteristics they define as left-leaning are a belief that the role of government is to provide for its people to end suffering and contribute to human prosperity, a belief that all people deserve help from the state when they have fallen on hard times, which many people would consider a utopian stand. In sharp contrast, the Constitution says that the role of government is to establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, provide for the common defense, promote the general welfare, and secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and our posterity, not to create a welfare state. Another characteristic of left-leaning groups is an embrace of empathy, compassion, and tolerance as guiding values. These are feelings rather than character. Guiding American values have always centered on qualities like courage, excellence, and hard work, qualities that inspire all citizens to rightly use the blessings of liberty as expressed in the Constitution. Another characteristic of left-leaning groups is a belief in identity politics. That is, some groups of people suffer disproportionately greater amounts in society due to That is, some groups of people suffer disproportionately greater amounts in society due to identity characteristics, including race, gender, sexual orientation, or religion. While this is a trendy movement currently called critical theory, it incites groups of people to act violently against each other using predefined issues named by those who stand to benefit from the ensuing chaos. We have seen this on our own streets not too far from here. So you, Mayor Bussie, are taking your cue about Act for America from organizations which have been federally discredited and hold values that are contrary to a fair and peaceful American life. I'm just about out of time, or I would present evidence of how worthy an organization, Act for America, is and how they have been unfairly vilified. I hope you will come to Back to the Blue next year, and all of you. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else this evening? Last call, anyone wishing to speak? Ms. Wilson, do we have anybody on the phone who would like to speak at, as part of a public comment period?
One moment, Mr. Mayor. Nora, this is Chris. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Nora, do we have any callers that wish to speak on Agenda Item 4.2, the public comment period?
Ladies and gentlemen, please press star one on your telephone keypad to speak for the public comment. Again, please press star one if you wish to speak. You have a question from the line of Karen Wills. Your line is open.
Hello, Mayor Bussie and council members.
Good evening. Hold, hold, if, if you could please, hold on, if you could please state your name, so we officially have it for the record. Please.
You bet. My name is Karen Wills. It's spelled K-A-R-E-M-W-I-L-L-S. I've been a resident of Bloomington for about 20 years. I am so proud of each and every one of you. Congratulations for your discernment. Congratulations for your ethics. Congratulations for your anti-racist, inclusive stance in avoiding participation in an event called Back to the Blue, which purports to support, to, to support our law enforcement agents, but which in fact, as, uh, is, you know, the community is very well aware, uh, was a, uh, part of a national movement, um, to, uh, push a far-right reactionary racist agenda. And, uh, as we, that has been characterized already in the remarks by the previous commentator. Uh, so, um, the, you know, I think all, all we had to really do is, is, you know, listen to her characterization of American values, and what was omitted from that characterization is our interdependency, our diversity, our caring for one another, our seeking for centuries to move towards creating a beloved community in which every single human being can thrive, and in which justice is transformative and restorative and not punitive, and in which violence is abjured. We saw the Back to the Blue rally last year with, you know, those middle fingers raised and the screaming and the guns with which people were circulating on the lawn of our civic center. And honestly, this year, I was afraid to go anywhere near it because it was so intimidating and threatening when they circled last year. So I am simply grateful, appreciative, and, um, uh, wanted to, to call and, and, and do honor to your discernment. And, uh, you know, certainly the Back to the Blue people have the American freedom to express their opinions, however bigoted they may be, but Bloomington is not about that, never has been, never will be. Thank you, that's all.
Thank you for your call. Ms. Wilson, anyone else?
Nora, do we-
There is, there is no one on cue via phone line, ma'am. You may proceed.
Thank you.
Thank you. No one on the phone line, and seeing no one else coming forward for our public comment period this evening, I will close tonight's public comment period. Uh, I, that's, that's a good point. Thank you, uh, council member. Uh, I didn't see, I didn't see anyone arrive, but, uh, Mr. Prager, are you with us this evening? Thanks for the reminder. I didn't see anyone arrive, but, uh, thanks for the reminder. With that, we will close tonight's public comment period, and we will move on to Item Five on our agenda, which is our introductory items. And our first two items under introductory are, uh, are very feel-good items. It's, uh, congratulatory items, uh, items showing the, the outstanding staff that we have here in the city of Bloomington, and, uh, just a well-deserved job well done. Congratulations to, to our, our city staff on a couple of different efforts. We'll start with Item 5.1, which is, uh, an award of excellence from the Minnesota Recreation and Parks Association. So we have with us a lot of folks from Park and Rec, it looks like. Allison Warren, our recreation manager, I think is going to kick this off and explain this to us. Good evening all, welcome.
Mayor and council members, thanks for having us. Typically, we would have this award presentation live from the Minnesota Recreation and Parks Association, but due to COVID, we have done a quick little video, and by we, I mean, our great communications team has put this together. So Grant, take it away.
It is an honor to be here today to present a MRPA 2020 Award of Excellence to the City of Bloomington Parks and Recreation.
Today, we are at Smith Park, and we are here accepting an award from the Minnesota Parks and Recreation Association for all of our work this past summer and winter of 2020 for Project Play.
We love our community. We love Parks and Recreation. And in a season where socialization, recreation offerings were being canceled back-to-back, it was really wonderful to be able to be recognized for the things that we did that provided opportunities for people to engage with each other in a year where we were deprived of it.
On behalf of the MRPA Awards Committee, it is my pleasure to present an Award of Excellence to the City of Bloomington Parks and Recreation for its winning project, Project Play, in the programming and events category.
It was a challenging year in 2020, and we really took advantage of a grant that we received through Hennepin County, uh, to offer safe programming and come up with new creative ideas to keep people outside, engaged, and having a good time, even amidst a pandemic. Through Project Play, we had a number of new offerings, including drive-in movies, pop-up soccer, family archery, snow sculpture contests, winter activity kits, and summer activity kits.
I was asked to work on the winter kit program. I thought that would be a great opportunity to give back to the community, uh, the way that Bloomington does. 1,500 kits given out to the community. I can't tell you the satisfaction of hearing the thank yous and being so appreciative that we were doing this for the community, especially in the time of COVID.
One of the projects that I started working on is our mobile recreation. So we traveled from site to site, offering different activities, and some of the unique things that we had to think of that we typically don't, how are we going to sanitize? How are we going to maintain social distancing while we're doing activities?
We also offered a number of things online, like a scavenger hunt and things you could do at home if you weren't quite comfortable coming out yet.
It was an excellent opportunity to work with such a good team of folks.
I'm so proud of our team and all of the work that they did. It's really impressive, and I'm just super happy that we were able to recognize them statewide for all the amazing work that we've done.
One, two, three, paint!
So we're here if you have any other questions, but, um, overall, we received a grant for $363,000 last year, and we're able to utilize that to create these new programs, buy new equipment, and I'm sure you've seen some of them already this year, and we'll be able to use them for many years to come. Any questions, we're happy to answer. Jenna Smith, Recreation Supervisor here, and Alan Kearney, he is one of our Recreation coordinators.
Well, uh, I, I don't have any questions. What I have are, are compliments and thanks for the work that you folks did in a tough, tough time. I mean, we all know how hard it was to, to deliver any, any services, uh, over the past year and a half, and to deliver a, a, a play program that spanned the seasons, that was across the community, uh, different age groups, had different folks involved, just outstanding. So thank you so very much for the work that you've done. Uh, thank you. A well-deserved award. Council, anything to add? Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mayor. I just, you know, I mentioned this at the time, but I just want to thank you again for the winter kits that you handed out. Those of us who are parents of young kids know that winter is a challenging time to keep them amused as it is. When you can't go anywhere or do anything, it's that much harder. We, I mean, we're still playing with stuff from the winter kit, so that was very much appreciated. Thank you.
Council, any other questions, comments? Mr. Verbrugge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. And I, I want to acknowledge, uh, one special part of the work that they did to put this program together is the incredibly short period of time that they developed this program because the, the, the Hennepin County opportunity came avail, available very quickly, and it had a very short timeframe. And the amount of creativity that this whole team showed, uh, in putting together, you're right, multi-season programming in just a couple of weeks was simply incredible. Um, they, you know, saved summer might be a little bit strong for last year, but, uh, they sure, they sure may have saved the sanity of a lot of parents who were suddenly cooped up with kids and, uh, finding ways to make sure that everybody was getting out and recreating and enjoying leisure activities. It was a point of pride for our organization, and they earn every bit of recognition they get.
Thank you. Thank you, Allison. Jenna, Alan, anything to add to any of this?
Well, just grateful to be here.
The only thing I would add was, um, during the winter kits, it was Christmas time, so people were picking up their kits right before Christmas, and they had the Christmas hats on, the kids were in the back, and it was just as much a joy for me to be out there, um, being able to do this, as I guess, as joyful as, as it was for the kids to receive it, so it was a, it was a great experience.
Good. Well, thank you all. Very, very much. Thank you. Let's give them a round of applause. Item 5.2 on our agenda is another, uh, an award, a, a job out, uh, an outstanding job well done, um, a Minnesota 2021 DWI Patrol All-Stars Award. Ms. Manderscheid, tell us more.
Uh, Mayor members, I'd like to invite Maureen O'Brien up to the podium. So this is actually the second time, uh, the city's legal department has won one of these awards. Uh, Maureen was honored this year as a DWI All-Star, um, one of 61 DWI All-Stars recognized by the, uh, state of Minnesota at the Minnesota Twins game a few weeks ago. Uh, Maureen was honored, uh, for her successful argument before the Minnesota Supreme Court in State v. Schwartz, uh, which was a somewhat complicated case, nuanced, I should say, nuanced case about, uh, intent, uh, to drive under the influence of a controlled substance. So it was, uh, it was a great win before the Supreme Court, and even better to get a statewide recognition for that. So she, um, I believe the bats were backordered, but I know that, that Maureen, uh, was able to be on the field, uh, and there's a photo from the event in the packet.
Thank you. Maureen, congratulations, and congratulations to the legal department on back-to-back, uh, awards. That's very impressive. Uh, thanks much for your work. Tell us more. If you could explain a, a bit about the, uh, about the, the case as much as you possibly can, that we can understand, which, you know? But, uh, it'd be, I'd, I'd be curious to hear what, some details on that.
Certainly. Mayor, council members, um, when I volunteered to help out our criminal team when this case was at the court of appeals level, I did not think that we would go all the way to the Supreme Court. But it was an interesting issue where the, um, the, the challenge was that typically in a, in a criminal case, there needs to be an element of intent. You have to prove that someone had an intent to do the action. It's typical mostly when you get to the felony level, but also sort of gross misdemeanors. In this case, we had a plea. The person pled guilty to a DWI-controlled substance. He admitted that the substance was found in his body, but he, his argument, which was a very sophisticated legal argument, was that without proving intent to have that substance in his body, the state couldn't convict. So it was an appeal from a plea, and then it was just a purely legal argument about how does, um, intent play into this, into this legal question? So it had was, it was an exciting case, and, um, it was important because had I lost, I think it would have made, um, made it difficult to prosecute DWIs for a bit, so it was, it was a good win.
Very good. And, and had you argued in front of the Supreme Court before?
I had not, no.
So this is your first, you're one and O against the, in the front of the Supreme Court. Good for you. Well done. Well done.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Council, any questions? Well, well done. No, okay, very good. Thank you very much, and congratulations on, on being an All-Star.
Thank you.
And I'm never shy about saying that our Bloomington city staff is, is really second to none, and, and I truly believe that. I think, uh, I, I hear that from so many folks, uh, in the community. I hear that from so many folks beyond the community, and, uh, the, the people, the companies, the representatives who work with the city of Bloomington employees have nothing but good things to say, sing their praises constantly. And I've heard that consistently and constantly over the past decade, and, uh, this just kind of exemplifies that. And it's very nice to get awards, and it's nice to be recognized for the good work done, and it's nice to have more to put in our trophy case out front, and always happy to do that. So, um, so thank you all. Thanks, thanks to the folks who did win the award, but thanks to our entire staff, and we've got a lot of staff members here this evening. Thank you for the work that you've done, and thanks for, for all that, uh, you contribute to the city of Bloomington, so, and up here as well. So thanks. Moving on to Item 5.3 is along those lines. So when we, uh, about five years ago or so, we laid out our strategic priorities within the city of Bloomington, what we were hoping to accomplish strategically at the, at the policy level, at the, the city council level. We, we laid those out, and, um, I credit the, the staff and, and Mr. Verbrugge for bringing forward our Item 5.3, Mission Moments. Basically, a, a look at, kind of a more in-depth look at some of our, uh, the, the strategic priorities that we have laid out. We've done a couple over the past couple of months, looked a little deeper in the, the specifics, uh, of a couple of those things, and this evening, uh, we've got a presentation, a look a little bit deeper into our strategic priority of equity and inclusion. And I think that's helpful not only for, uh, for us up here to get an update, but also for the members of our community to, to learn more about the work that is going on specific to the, the overall mission and specific to the goals and the priorities that the council has laid out on behalf of the community. So bringing forward this information is Faith Jackson, our racial equity coordinator, who's going to talk us through this. Good evening, Ms. Jackson. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I am excited to be here to provide an update on the city's racial equity work. Tonight's mission moment and those to follow, um, in the next two meetings, will really sort of showcase the progress that we're making on our racial equity work. Uh, I'm also excited because I'm not alone tonight. I have with me some amazing staff who are really helping to lead this work, and at this time, I'm going to invite those who are speaking to just take a seat a little closer to the podium so that it'll be easier for them to transition when they do. Don't be afraid of the seats right down in the front. And as they get settled, I just want to very quickly, uh, take a moment to provide some context for what we're going to hear tonight. And so, um, I'll wait a minute for the slide to come on the screen, and I'm sure it will be available this time. We've double-checked. Awesome. Thank you, Chris. Um, so before I invite, uh, staff to come in and present and talk about the work that they're doing, I thought that it would be really important to just take a minute to really recap, um, and think about how far the city has come in events and, uh, the strategic priority of equity inclusion, and more specifically, the racial equity work. And so you can see on the screen sort of a timeline of how this work has evolved over the years, starting with really a prioritization of racial equity and equity inclusion from the city manager's office, followed by a prioritization of that work from the city council. And along the way, there were many staff who were involved in moving this work forward, many of those who did not have equity inclusion as a core component of their job, but just staff who are really committed to the work and wanted to do great things. Uh, also, as you can see in the timeline, in 2018, there was some staff training. In 2019, the city hired the racial equity coordinator. And when I started this work, I really wanted to be intentional about prioritizing the infrastructure for how we sustain it and continue it. And part of that work of sustaining and embedding racial equity in all that we do is really vested in the city's racial equity action teams. Next slide, please. And so tonight, and in the meetings to follow, we're going to get an update from the city's racial equity action teams. Um, we will have a few of those, about four of them, present today, and then four others will be presenting on August 2nd. And then also in August, though, we're going to have some staff come in and talk about some of those priority issues, um, that we are advancing related to the racial equity business plan initiative. And I just want to stop for a moment before I, um, bring up staff to talk about that and just say, the reason why I thought it was important to, uh, for us to start this conversation by acknowledging the- to, for us to start this conversation by acknowledging the great work that's happened over the last several years is because we know that the racial equity work that we're doing is not a us versus them initiative, right? Racial equity and inclusion is a win-win proposition. We know that racial equity is good for the city of Bloomington, both our residents of color, but then all of our residents. And there are both social and economic incentives and sort of prioritizations related to that racial equity work. And so I'm really excited for what we're doing here tonight. And I thought it would be important to stop and acknowledge just the great work that's happening in the city, particularly because most times when I'm in front of the council and our staff, I'm talking about the things that we can do differently or sometimes having to identify those ways that we need to improve our work. And so I wanted to make sure that we also stop and sort of congratulate staff for the great work that we're doing. And so next slide, Chris. So today, we will hear from our racial equity action teams, a really quick recap on what those are. In September 2020, we kicked off the racial equity action teams. We have one for most departments and approximately 60 employees in the city of Bloomington serve on those teams. They volunteer to be a part of that work. The racial equity action teams are REITs, as you will hear me refer to them. Advanced racial equity work from the unique perspectives of individual departments and divisions. And then in tonight's presentation, they're going to take about five to seven minutes to just sort of highlight and showcase some of the work that they're doing. This will not be a comprehensive overview of all the work that the racial equity action teams are doing. We will have sort of a comprehensive overview of that work included in the council packet at the upcoming meeting. But it's simply an opportunity for them to showcase some of their priorities and really talk about those things that they're most excited about. We're also asking, because we're going to have about four or five different presenters tonight, that if possible, you reserve your questions until the end, and then we'll have them all come back and take questions at that time. So without further ado, I want to transition now and have our first presentation from the legal department.
Hello.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Next slide, please. So I'm just going to start with interviews, introducing our team. The racial equity action team in legal has Melissa, our city attorney, Wendy, deputy city attorney and criminal, an assistant city attorney and criminal, that's Jennifer, a paralegal, Tammy, two assistant city attorneys in civil, that's me, and Megan's here too, and then our crime victim liaison, Sandra. Next slide, please.
I am going to highlight some of the steps we've taken on the criminal side. What's, I was just sitting there listening to Faith. And one of the things that's hard on the criminal side is that we, most of our work is done outside of the city of Bloomington. So it's not just a function of us as Bloomington City prosecutors saying we're going to do something different. We do have to get buy-in from the court system. We have to get buy-in from probation, defense attorneys, court scheduling. But we've made some really good steps this far, so far this year. One of our, one of the most exciting ones that we, is not on this slide, but happened after that. The creation of the slide is we are starting a pilot program with Hennepin County for resolving warrants in an expedited process. We, there's a lot of research or data to back the fact that when people are getting housing through the government, one thing that can really prevent them from getting that stable housing, which is kind of a foundation for keeping them out of the criminal justice system, is if they have an active warrant. And a lot of times you have people with misdemeanor cases, traffic cases, that shouldn't be holding somebody up from getting that shelter. So we are piloting where we have very specific, quick steps, off-hours, don't need to be E-filed. We have a dedicated judge, we have a dedicated prosecutor, dedicated public defender, and it's going to just coordinate that so that it goes much quicker. So somebody, if they're ready to sign that lease and get going in that program, and we don't have all those warrants cleaned up, they have to wait 45 more days to go through the process. So that's one thing that has been great that we were able to be involved in. We are very close to hopefully starting a restorative court. Restorative court means we are restoring the defendant. And that is, we are connecting the defendant with the appropriate people in the system that can help them get shelter, can help them get food, can help them get transportation, connect them with health providers. That is very defendant-oriented. And we need a full-time social worker, a Hennepin County social worker. And we are working with the Hennepin County system. Hopefully, there's going to be grant opportunities. And we would be sharing the cost for that social worker, but that social worker would be a Bloomington social worker. It would be Bloomington defendant-specifics. It's not going to be an embedded social worker like at the police department who has a very specific role. This is going to be somebody that's just for the Bloomington defendants on this caseload, just city caseload, not felonies. We are trying to work through a system of alternative resolutions for many of our cases that is something called diversion. Gives a lot of people an opportunity to be able to keep any sort of criminal record clean. They wouldn't, they'd come through the system without a conviction. Unfortunately, we have been using, like many city, city departments, we were using an outside source. That actually charges the defendant. And if you've already taken somebody who maybe doesn't have the resources, that's very onerous to have them have that benefit, but maybe don't have the resources to pay for that. So we, as the prosecutors, are developing our own diversion program. It is, we are vetting the programs, we are setting up the system, and we are hopefully going to be getting a law student or possibly hiring somebody to help us monitor those and help people get through that system a little bit quicker and without the negative impact of a, of a conviction. Certainly, there's only certain cases that are appropriate for that when we look at people's criminal history and the type of offense. Most of these that we're talking about are going to be trespass or theft offenses. And then the last thing that we're working on, which is going to be a much bigger lift, is circle sentencing, also known as restorative justice, not to be confused with restorative court. Restorative justice is victim and community-facing. So it's a, it's a, has circle sentencing. And it's a real way to either have at the micro level, the community and the offender come back together, family members coming back together, or just an individual defendant and a victim. And it's a way to, it's a more holistic approach to repairing the broken relationship that resulted as a function of the criminal, the crime. Sorry. Thank you.
Next slide, please. So that was kind of our spotlight, so I won't go into too much detail about our additional priorities because we have a lot more good information for you guys to hear from our other groups. But just a quick highlight of some of the other things that we are working on are up on this slide. And you'll hear more, and you've already heard about the Juste's Coalition, and then equitable contracting, micro-business. You'll hear about that in the future as well. So thank you. And now I think we'll turn it over to finance.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Next slide, please. The finance team members are Dana Chow.
So, excuse me, Julie, we, we all know you. Why don't you just introduce yourself?
I was, I was going to get, say it after I introduce my other people. My husband said you should introduce yourself last, but, um, sorry. He really did, though. Dana Chow, Lori Conami Scholler, Sue Legrand, Jan Almquist, and myself, Julie Vogel.
Now I'm seeing it. Thank you. Well done.
Okay. Finance's top three priorities, next slide, please, are the equitable purchasing and contracting, connecting with our BIPOC community, and growth and learning opportunities. Our spotlight, next slide, sorry. There's not that many. Our next, our spotlight priority is equitable purchasing and contracting. We started a, a group with Just Legal, and we realized that people in divisions and departments throughout the city but do a lot of the purchasing. And so we know that we have to include them. And so we established a micro business, and they are actually going to present to the council on August 30th. So you'll get more detail on that, and I know Maureen just spoke to it. Next slide, please. The second item is connecting with the BIPOC community. In early July, we sent out over 1,300 special assessment letters. And for the very first time, on the backside of the letter, it was completely translated into Spanish. We've had many calls and utility billing that they appreciated this. And there was also telephone numbers to call for other languages. And one of the things we just got the information on, next slide, please, is this map. The map of assessments by type of these special assessment letters that I sent. I know it's very busy and I'm sure you can't read it. But the civil fees, weeds and brush and utility bills are pretty much throughout the city. But the public nuisance is concentrated east of 35W. We're just starting to analyze this information of where the special assessments go in a racial equity lens. So we're just looking at that. Next, please. And then within the finance department, for growth and learning, we have about a dozen books that people can check in and out in the department, and we discuss it at our weekly huddles. And we have places where we, links to articles and podcasts and TED, TED Talks within the department. So we've been working on it. We're trying to keep the conversation alive and going on a weekly basis. Thank you. And I believe IT is next.
Thank you, Julie.
Hello.
Good evening.
My name is Liz Samorn, and I'm here representing ITreat, which is the IT Racial Equity Action Team. Next slide, please. So I'm the current project manager. I serve with Maria Hara, who's our chair. And also on our team is Amy Chaney, Kyle Johannes, Greg Lang, and Bob O'Neil. Next slide, please. When developing our racial equity initiatives, we ran into the barrier of being an internally facing department, primarily supporting other departments. Some of our work was very clear. We have created a digital platform for REIT teams across the city to share their action, action plans and collaborate. During the pandemic, this became extra important as we all moved to, to a digital format. However, we struggled with what initiatives were specific to IT and would create meaningful impact for the Bloomington community. What we realized is racial equity really starts with people. Sounds silly. We need to work to change the culture of city Bloomington IT to create an equitable and welcome environment for people from a diverse set of backgrounds. The result of that realization is a program we call Brave Conversations. We took the term brave from MIT. It stands for build, respect, acknowledge, validate, and emphasize. These conversations are a place for our departments to come together and as a team in a supportive environment to explore racial equity. This can mean high-level discussions from an introduction to terms and concepts, and industry trends, all the way down to individual experiences and department-specific challenges. Through these conversations, we are building a resilience in the team so that we can experience setbacks and overcome them. I'm often asked why this matters, building this culture about, around racial equity. And there's a lot of reasons I can give. But for me, the simple one is that discrimination costs. People who, in an environment that is not equitable, where they feel that they're excluded from the culture, will feel isolated. A person who experiences isolation from their peers and from their work environment will underperform. If a person feels unwelcome to express themselves fully at work, if they feel that they will be judged and evaluated on factors unrelated to their work performance, that person will leave. We want to retain people for the right reasons, not lose them for the wrong ones. Once inequity becomes a pattern, a trend, if the employer does not work to counteract that culture, even if they don't actively support it, you develop a reputation. A poor reputation makes it difficult to attract the best candidates to open positions, which in turn detracts from the effective and efficient service that city of Bloomington deserves. On the other hand, diversity pays. When we intentionally create an environment that is equitable and emphasizes industry expertise and excellence over an environment that demands conformity, we're able to attract employees from a deeper pool and deliver the quality of service that the city of Bloomington demands. Next slide, please. There are many initiatives that we're going to take on as our work expands. These will include well-worn, familiar paths like internships, industry-specific ones such as examining how our language can disguise inequities, or software platforms that will let us organize equity data into clear and usable formats. However, before we can embark on those initiatives, we must first build the foundation that they are going to stand on. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Jane Sanon. I represent Parks and Recreations. I am the chair for our racial equity team. Jenna Smith, who spoke earlier, is my project manager. Susan Foss is my deputy director and is our department director. Leah Yuz is our arts center manager, and Mark Olson's our Creekside Park Recreation Facilities person and staff. Next slide, please. To highlight what we've done so far is to really be intensive when it comes to creating accessible and inclusive programming. Now, in other words, we want to be explicit versus implicit. And Lehmanster, we want to be as direct as possible by being explicit, having a handbook, or implicit and just suggest the kind of activities that our leadership wants to implement to programming. We want to be as clear, concise, and as direct to the public and be as simple and also transparent as to what it is that we're trying to do. The programs that we provide for Parks and Recreations can be used to generate civic and community engagement. What that means is we just don't want folks to be in, involved in our programming. We want it to be engaged in our programming. The bottom line is, leadership has set the tone in which we, as a department, need to execute, and we have to make sure that the folks in which we serve understand and appreciate the kind of services that we provide now here within our community, but the folks that we don't get to serve on a regular basis. Next slide, please. Winter Kits was talked about earlier, tremendous success. Parkmaster Plan is something that we've been really trying to have and bring lenses that serves all of our community residents. The racial equity team supported staff-leading planning process of that. We had an outside council come in and basically give us the do's and don'ts, the best practices, how demographics, how numbers, statistics, all are encompassing factors into providing programming, not just for what we see, being implicit, and, but what actually the programs need, being explicit, because the numbers don't lie, right? Plan incorporated equity narrative and equity metrics, numbers, 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 right? It's like baseball, you know? You can have now all the stats that you would want, but now it's really about numbers that, you know, small ball. It is, is considered one of those things where people can come in and use its stats to have a team that probably isn't at the greatest team on the field, but on paper, they look great. So for us, what we're trying to do is implement what we have in the city and implement the numbers that we really either are hitting the numbers or hitting the goals out of the park, or we really need some work. And that really brings all the talent that we have in the city, especially with Parks and Rec, to work as a collective group and in a symbiotic way to make sure that we're not only putting stuff on paper that you all do here, but we actually activate that when we serve the folks in the community. So Bloomington, our Center of Arts, Arts and Cultural Programming, meeting with BIPOC cultural arts organizations and local community colleges is really critical for us because arts is international. It's encompassing of all different races and cult, cultures. And for us as a, a, a group and a leadership, our leadership team led by Susan and Ann really want us to go out into community and actually ask them what exactly that are, what is out there that we're not currently providing that might be an asset to them. And not only that, meet folks, especially where they're at versus just creating an event and then inviting them and just say, well, we had an event, just like Field of Dreams, if we build it, they'll will come. If they have the opportunity to be part of a programming or an event or a cultural thing that we may think may not be as cool or creative, but for, for some folks it is. And so they'll come here without having the experience of being in this building. So making connection to highlights, opportunities for collaborations. And for us as a Parks and Recreation team, it's really about how we collaborate with other entities to really engage folks where they're at, but also provide opportunities where, where we- but also provide opportunities where we don't have a footprint or a deep enough footprint to make a difference in our community. Next slide, please. Partnership, and again, I'm not going to sit here nauseam talking to you about this, guys, because you guys see this and hear this all the time. But for us, existing partnerships with Three Rivers, Parks Department hosted pop-up programming at South Gate Department, and that's just one of the trends that we've started this year. We've been successful where we actually has Three Rivers go out, provide pop-up programs. And by pop-up programs, it's literally a mishmash of things that we could do in a brick and mortar setting that they actually bring to the actual apartment complex and have a van with equipment that the kids and the community and the families get to enjoy and have an experience with that they may not have here in our programming, but they'll have directly where they live. And transportation usually is the number one barrier why these folks cannot participate in our program. And the second, obviously, you guys knows this as well, is when it comes to money and funding. Volunteer diversity, increased representation of BIPOC volunteers, it's pretty self-explanatory. Increased volunteer opportunities for people with disabilities. When we talk about BIPOC, we just don't mean color. We mean this where you're at from a financial perspective. If you're elderly, if you're young, we want to encompass all the mosaic in which the City of Bloomington represents into the kind of programmings that we offer. So being diverse and nimble. Data collection is collect accurate data by program use and participation to maximize our understanding of our community. And again, it's self-explanatory, numbers don't lie. If we were able to provide a service at a high rate and a high quality in a certain area of Bloomington, we should be able to replicate that in all the sites in the City of Bloomington. It's not to make it, you know, fair for all, but we're trying to make it equitable for all and within reason. Next slide, please. And I believe I'm done. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Gene. You win for the most baseball analogies in your presentation.
Awesome. So Mayor and Council, you've heard from our racial equity action teams. I was sitting there like a proud mom, just super excited about the work that's happening. I get to work with these amazing people every day. And so I am so happy that you have an opportunity to meet them. And some of them, this is their first time presenting to council. And so I think they did an amazing job. I'm going to invite project managers and chairs to come to the podium at this time. And so if you have any questions or comments for the group, we can take about five minutes to do that.
Well, thank you. First of all, thank you to all of you for your presentations and bringing this work forward. It's good to hear the specifics because we've been hearing, I think, about the racial equity action teams and it's good to hear the specifics associated with that now. I appreciate the work that you're doing and the thoughtful work that you're doing, putting in not just, not just a one-size-fits-all kind of thing, but specific to what you're doing, what's happening in Bloomington City Hall and how it applies to the City of Bloomington itself. So thank you very much for that. Counsel, do we have any questions about the presentation? Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mayor. Just, first of all, just again, thank you. And I think one of the things about racial equity work is that I think a lot of folks kind of see it as sort of a, an ephemeral sort of fluffy thing. It can be really hard to sort of conceptualize for a lot of folks. And so I think to see all of that, you know, right in front of us, this is real stuff that's happening. These are real actions that are being taken that will have an effect on advancing racial equity and inclusion. So I'm just really, really grateful to have all of that. I'm wondering, first of all, my questions are specific to the legal department, but first of all, I just want to say I first learned about restorative justice 12 years ago when I was working on a campaign. And it's something that's always been really, really interesting to me and I think holds a lot of potential. So I'm just really, really glad that we're embracing that and moving forward with that. I'm wondering if you, you mentioned something about complaint-based enforcement. Could you just talk a little bit about what that work looks like, what that entails?
Certainly. So that is something that we are sort of at the preliminary stages of our research on. Well, one of the things that we came across as we were, as we were researching was that if you look at places that were redlined, right? So this is something we learned about in the Just Deeds Program. Those tend to map almost perfectly with areas that are high problem properties in terms of code enforcement. So this is more non-criminal, but civil code enforcement issues. And so it's a question of how do we prioritize the use of our resources as the city to respond to some of these areas, knowing that maybe some of the historical context of how the neighborhoods became in the situations that they are, that context behind it.
Thank you. That's really helpful. And I, you know, I think that aspect that you hit on and sort of that basic idea is one of the the real sort of apprehensions I've always had about complaint-based enforcement is that it can perpetuate those kinds of inequities. It can be sort of a weapon that neighbors often use against each other. So I'm just really glad that you're looking into that. And that's going to be really important work. Thank you.
Councilmember Lowman?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I really liked, Mayor, in terms of what our IT department talked about in terms of what are the, you know, what are the costs and the benefits for this type of work. And I think you really did a nice job succinctly talking about it in terms of why this work is important for the city. And that was going to be my question, but you answered it for me, so I can't very well ask that. But I'll ask a different question because I'm a huge baseball fan. And I got to tell you, I was really let down by the Twins this year because on paper, they look really good. I'm going to tell you, they look great. And wow, they just did measure up. So when we look across these four different departments and we look at the measurement, because these things can look great on paper, how do we know that we have success? You know, we pick these different spotlight projects. And I don't, we don't probably want to go through all four, but if somebody wanted to maybe come forward and, and, you know, you know, because I'm a big baseball fan, you know, what's a home run, you know, when we get these things done for the, for the Bloomington resident, kind of, you know, kind of talking a little bit longer so you get a little time to think because you're not used to presenting in front of council. So there you go.
All right. Well, I can answer that one. I'm a Cubs fan, so I know the history of losing.
Mario, Mario, will you introduce yourself, please?
Yes, I am Mario, IT department, and the chair. So definitely.
Feel your pain there. In regards to, we actually had that conversation about how do we measure success? And how do we make sure that we're making progress, we're moving that needle forward? And one of the things that we did specifically in IT around the Brave Conversations that we've set up so far is making sure that we're engaging our staff members to make sure that we are hearing them out after we start these conversations. And we're doing that with surveys at the moment. So we make sure that we send out these surveys and make sure that we're hearing their voices as well, seeing if this, this is effective conversations that we're having. So with that, we're able to gather some data and figure out, are we doing a good job? Are we making this effective for everyone and not just for, you know, just a a number of people? So by doing that, we've been able to collect some really good information on, just to give you a quick summary behind it. We've done, we've tried to do this in the past prior to the racial equity action teams. And one thing that we haven't been able to do is get the amount of participation across the board. And this time, we actually used a external facilitator, meaning outside of our department, to help us go ahead and start this first brave conversation. And I think that is what definitely helped us and we got participation across the board. And personally, I can say I was really impressed by the department for them to come up and have these difficult conversations. So that was a huge improvement for something that we've tried to do, I want to say probably the last three, four years. So for us, that was a big measurement of success. And I think that's going to keep on going as we continue to do these workshops. So, yep.
If I can add, Councilmember Lowman and Mayor, to hit a home run in the task in which we're being asked to not only implement but complete, it's when we are now being asked by other cities to replicate what we've done here to show others how it is that we can set the trend, execute the plan, and thrive within the plan. So right now, we're in our first couple innings and we're hoping to get to home stretch. And then hopefully win. And when I say win, is implement the kind of success that we have in programming to other cities, not just to show how better or how more advanced or whatever it is that we are versus the other cities, but how to bring folks to all the trials and tribulations that we've been through, how we've been able to address these, win, and then move forward. So that, that's what it would look like. But again, it's a long process that we've really just started a journey.
Thank you, Gene. Julie?
I'll speak on the equitable contracting and purchasing. And we have to use a basketball analogy. So the first half is going to be the planning and how we get the word out, communicate to women businesses, minority-owned businesses, that there are opportunities for purchasing and contracting with the city. So we are working, we've worked a little bit with Minneapolis, how they have this humongous vendor list, and we're going to see what we can use from that. And then so people will start submitting bids for all the stuff we spend money on. And then how will we measure it is when in our software, we can like check a box if this is from a minority women-owned business. And at the end of, you know, it's going to take a couple of years to make change happen, we'll be able to know that these dollars were spent where our target was. And that's how we'll measure it. Thank you. That would be the second half.
Counsel, any additional questions? Nothing? All right. Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Carter?
Just a quick question. On the close to restorative court, that piece, you talked about a social worker and the need for a social worker, but and mentioned Hennepin County. And I'm just curious, can you clarify, was that, has that position, did you say we're applying for a grant or are you in conversations with Hennepin County or?
We are. We are in conversations with Hennepin County. It would be a social worker that they already have. They estimated the amount would be 110,000 for a full-time and they've come up with a way to split that. Maybe we can negotiate that. I don't know.
Got it, got it.
Look to my city attorney for that. But yes, we, and we are, they already have that in place for Minneapolis. So Minneapolis does have a restorative court. So there is a process to go through and we've provided them with all the data that we've needed. And that's how they determine how many social worker positions we would need. So we would just be taking something that they had and we would be bringing it to Bloomington specific.
Great. Thank you for clarifying that. And I also just want to share my utmost gratitude for all the work that you guys have been doing. I don't think it's news to anybody that Minnesota has some of the worst inequities in the country when you look at health, education, employment, you know, the list goes on. And I think for a long time in Minnesota, we've, we've talked to good game, but we haven't really been able to take our commitment and turn it into action. And, and you guys really are turning it into action in a very meaningful way. And I really appreciate that you've done it in a way that you're not only engaging with each other, but you're engaging with our community, you're being transparent, you're thinking about measurement. And so I just thank you for your leadership. Thank you for stepping into these positions. And I'm assuming that a lot of this work is in addition to your, your normal work that you're doing. And so just want to, I just really appreciate it. So thank you.
Any other questions, Counsel? Gene, you hit it on the head. And I have said this in the past as well. You know we're doing something right when other cities copy it. And that's been the way it's been in Minnesota cities for a number of years. And I have seen more things coming out of this city hall copied by cities across the state in recent years than I have for a very long time. So outstanding work, Faith. I can see why you're, you're smiling like a proud mother with this group. So this is great work and this is inspiring. And I'm looking forward to hearing more over the next couple of weeks and the next couple of sessions. But Mario, Liz, Julie, Gene, Maureen, Wendy, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
We move on to our consent business this evening, item six on our agenda. And Councilmember Coulter has our consent calendar.
I do indeed. Thank you, Mayor. So I have heard from the city manager that we have holds on items 6.3, 6.6, 6.10, and 6.12. I'm going to make one last call. And I see Councilmember Carter?
Yes, I would like to hold 6.13.
6.13 it is.
And then Mayor and Councilmember Coulter, 6.9.
6.9, all right. All right. Let's see here. So we added 6.9 and 6.13. So just to review, then I have holds on 6.3, 6.6, 6.9, 6.10, 6.12, and 6.13. Might just be easier to say it that way, I think. But I will, that being the case, Mayor, I will move items 6.1, 6.2, 6.4, 6.5, 6.7, 6.8, and 6.11.
Second.
A motion by Councilmember Coulter, a second by Councilmember Carter to accept tonight's consent business as stated thus far. Hearing no further discussion. Ms. Ecklinger?
Carter?
Carter.
Aye. Coulter?
Aye.
Lowman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries 6-0. Councilmember Coulter, item 6.3.
Yeah, that is Councilmember Martin.
Thank you very much. And Mayor, I just wanted to pull this one because it's been some time since our joint meeting with the Richfield folks, Richfield City Council. And this project in particular, kind of this Portland Gateway report, seems like a pretty exciting example of some of the reimagining we're doing around our commercial nodes, both mobility, small business support, things like that. So maybe as a refresher for folks that weren't able to tune in for that meeting, just a little bit of information on what this means and what our adopting or accepting this report means tonight.
Mr. Verbrugge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Councilmembers, Councilmember Martin. Chris, if you would promote Julie Farnham, I believe should be online. Julie is a senior planner in our Community Development Department and was the project lead on this project. Again, this is the Congress for New Urbanism demonstration project that was done over the past couple of years. And unfortunately, it was interrupted by COVID. It was planned to be a much more involved and interactive process, which, you know, some things got in the way of that happening. But this is looking at that area of Portland and American and Portland and 77th and Richfield and studying, you know, best and highest use and how we can make that happen. So Julie, now that I think we have you with us, you want to just talk real quickly about what the recommendations say and then the idea of accepting versus adopting. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I think it'd be helpful just to start by reminding folks kind of what the scope of one of these CNU legacy projects is. So they're not in-depth studies. They aren't intended to be in-depth studies. They are really focused around a, generally a week-long community design workshop. And the, they really are the culmination of the ideas presented, generated at that, at that workshop. And so the way I look at this, I think one of the key benefits of this is to, it's an opportunity at a very low price to get a fresh perspective and insights from a national planning and design professional firm to, on a local project and on a local area. So I think that is, is one of the really key benefits of a project like this. The report, so the culmination of this is really a collection of ideas and suggestions to consider. Some of them will need further consideration, further scrutiny to determine whether or not we want to do them or whether or not they're even feasible here. There's a couple in there that are ideas from other areas of the country. And again, because this process doesn't involve a whole lot of deep vetting of any of the recommendations, we would have to verify that some of them are actually things that cities in Minnesota can actually do. So there's some ideas like that. There's a lot of other ideas that are straight-up planning kinds of ideas. And really, this is focused around enhancing the public realm. So enhancing the streetscape, enhancing mobility for pedestrians and bicyclists and non-motorized ways of getting around. non-motorized ways of getting around. Also looking at different ideas for redevelopment, but it's very high level, which is why it makes sense to accept this report and the recommendations, as opposed to formally adopt it, which is the process that we typically take with a, one of our district plans, or like the more recent Lindell Plan, which are generally the products of 18 months to two years. And there's a lot of analysis that goes into those, and a lot of vetting through of what are the recommendations and such. So that's not the case with this product here. So they're really kind of two different things. And really, by accepting this, what we're, the city's saying is that we're open to explore these ideas. So it's really a set of ideas for us to consider as we make decisions that involve this area. By accepting it, again, it's saying that we're, these are ideas that we want to think about, but it doesn't commit us to implement anything in a specific timeframe until, you know, we decide that it's something we do want to move forward and that we've had a chance to fully scrutinize it.
Councilmember Martin?
That's extremely helpful. And even if it's just us exploring ideas and looking at things we might want to talk about further, I think this kind of brainstorming and being willing to be imaginative and partner with our surrounding cities, another really cool thing that I think we should be promoting.
Absolutely. And again, to clarify, by accepting this, this means it comes into our realm of thinking. We begin to look at possibilities and explore the different options that we may have in this area. In no way does this commit us to anything written in that report right now. This is simply an accepting of the report and an accepting of the ideas coming forward.
That's correct. And I would like to just follow up on something that councilmember Martin said. And one of the things that I personally felt was really valuable with this is the collaboration, the partnership with the city of Richfield through this. And I think that, you know, building those kinds of bridges across our borders is really important.
Couldn't agree more. Always good to collaborate with our neighbors to the north. Councilmember Martin, any additional questions? Then I'd look if you're comfortable with it. Perhaps you can move item 6.3 for us.
I would be happy to. Mayor, I will move that we approve the resolution, the resolution accepting the Portland Gateway Report is attached to the city council packet.
Second?
A motion by councilmember Martin, a second by councilmember Coulter, to accept item 6.3 on our consent business. Hearing no further council discussion. Ms. Eicheldinger.
Carter? Aye. Coulter?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye.
Next up, item 6.6.
Thank you, Mayor. This is me, and there's no need for staff to come up or address anything. I just, this is approval of a couple of contracts related to road salt for the city of Bloomington. And I just wanted to point out sort of for transparency that these numbers, these are for purchase up to the numbers listed. This does not commit us to buying this particular amount of salt. These are just sort of the upper limit. But I also wanted to highlight, and Mr. Keel and I have exchanged emails on this before, that I know that staff is working diligently to reduce the amount of salt that we use when we salt the roads and maintain public safety and all of that, because, you know, obviously it all ends up in the water and can be very problematic there. So I just wanted to highlight that. This is kind of a sort of a perennial thing that I like to bring up and just make reference to. So that's all I have to add about that. So with that, I will move item 6.6.
I'll second it.
We've got a motion by councilmember Coulter, a second by councilmember Loman to accept item 6.6. I will state, I'm not thrilled about talking about road salt in July. I want to hold that off as long as possible, but I understand we do have to plan for the future. We have a motion and a second on this item. Hearing no further council discussion. Ms. Eicheldinger.
Carter? Aye. Coulter?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries 6-0. Item 6.9.
Thank you, Mayor. This is councilmember Loman.
Councilmember Loman?
Thank you, Mayor. I was hoping that, I always like to, anytime I get a chance to do a shameless plug, either of salt or of, I'm not sure if our police chief is there, but our Pathways to Policing Grant Agreement. And I just, we have just a fantastic program there, and I always just want to give you an opportunity to talk a little bit about it, and what it is and what it's not. I think some folks don't still quite understand exactly what the Pathways to Policing is and how folks become members of our Bloomington Police Department.
Sure.
Chief Hartley, good evening.
Well, good evening. Mr. Mayor, councilmember Loman, again, we are proud to be participating in the Pathways to Policing Program. I want to say this is our third or fourth year where we have hired people on the front end, those that come from a diverse background, not only of cultures and ethnicities, but also of career paths. And so instead of the traditional route that maybe somebody would go through, a school of criminology or criminal justice, we're finding, long like the FBI did years ago, that maybe some of the best police officers are those that come from the social sciences and, you know, the health field. And so we currently have got three people, or I'm sorry, two people that are going through that program out at Hennepin Tech. They are set to graduate the end of August, and then they will be standing before you shortly thereafter as they're sworn in. So again, this has been a tool that we've used for the last several years to help diversify the police department. And again, it's a program that many other cities have also kind of joined in. Mr. Mayor, when you talk about people replicating us, I can tell you that we were one of the early participants in this program, and we are seeing the benefits of it. So we will continue to engage in this way amongst others to bring in people that are bringing a different skillset, if you will, to the job of being a police officer.
Well, thank you very much. And I just want to highlight too, you know, just in case folks didn't hear, they have to fulfill the exact same standards as the rest of our police department to become officers. If there isn't anything else, then Mayor?
Mr. Verbrugge has a comment. Mr. Verbrugge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Councilmember Loman, I appreciate Chief Hartley's leadership on this, his predecessor, Chief Potts, as well. And I think Mike is being overly humble that Bloomington and St. Louis Park actually developed this program working together. So it's not just that we're, you know, happy to continue participating in it. This is an example of a place where our police department was a leader in developing a program, recognizing the need to make sure that our ranks were more reflective of the community. And this is a national award-winning program that we developed. So thanks, Chief.
You're welcome.
Well, then I'll go ahead and move to approve the Pathways to Policing Reimbursement Grant Contract Agreement Amendment with the Minnesota Department of Public Safety.
Second.
We've got a motion by councilmember Loman, a second by councilmember Carter to accept item 6.9 on our consent business. Hearing no further council discussion. Ms. Eicheldinger.
Carter? Aye. Coulter?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries 6-0. Item 6.10.
Thank you, Mayor. This is you?
It is indeed. Thank you very much. Item 6.10, it's actually, it's listed as the approval of the state plan of operation. And I just wanted to clarify this, because this has been something that has come up in the past, and frankly, it's come up in my past when I was at the University of Minnesota. We went through this quite a bit. There is a, there has been, for a number of years, a Department of Defense program where the Department of Defense will distribute excess equipment to local police departments across the country. And this is basically an approval of that, that the Bloomington Police will be accepting excess equipment. But I do want to make it very clear that this equipment does not currently include firearms or vehicles. And I know there's been well-deserved criticism, I think, of some police departments becoming over-militarized. And this is one of the reasons why, is this Department of Defense program, I think, that's putting that type of weapon and vehicles into the hands of local police departments. But just to be clear, that the items accepted here in Bloomington are in fact clothing items, flashlights, sleeping cots, and night vision, night vision equipment. So just wanted to make that clear to any folks who might have questions about that. This is actually a good and useful program that the police department is part of. It does provide all of this equipment free of charge. And, but wanted to make it perfectly clear that the Bloomington Police Department at this time is not accepting either vehicles or firearms as part of this program. So anything to add to that, Chief, or?
No. Mr. Mayor, just to add, we are well aware of the criticisms that program has drummed up in the past. We did receive a data request several years ago, and I can tell you, the items that we had received in years past, under the stipulations of the contract, once you're done with them, they do have to be returned to the federal government. And so as of right now, there are no plans. We do sign this just so in the event that we do need equipment that could come down, as the mayor said, free of charge. But as of right now, there is no, there's nothing on the forefront to accept from the federal government.
Very good. I appreciate that. I appreciate that guidance and leadership of Bloomington Police to manage this program in that way. So well done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Coulter, a question?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just something that occurred to me. I don't know if this is a question for Chief Hartley or the city manager, but, you know, at the moment, the BPB does not accept firearms or vehicles. If that policy, that concept were to change, how, what would the process be for that change? Who would ultimately be the one in charge of approving that?
Chief Hartley?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and councilmember Coulter, that's a really good question. I can thank each and every one of you for funding our police department in a very positive way. I don't envision where we would ever accept firearms from the federal government. We're very particular on what we use in a civilian, in a urban setting. And so therefore, I just don't envision. We did well over 25, probably close to 30 years, accept an armored vehicle that has since been returned. And that just, I just don't, I don't see where we would incorporate utilizing firearms for our police department.
Thanks, Mr. Verbrugge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Councilmember Coulter, to be more specific, if the expectation is that anytime we may consider at a point in the future, something in those categories, that we would come back to council and discuss it with you, I think that's a reasonable expectation. It's not, it's my understanding, there isn't something in the agreement that says, we're not participating in this part, but we will participate in this part. It's clearly internal policy that we have. So we can certainly lay that down as a marker, that if we ever do come back and ask for, or think about it, that we will come to the council first and talk about it.
Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you. I would add for myself personally, that would be my expectation.
Very good.
Fair enough.
All right. Thank you, Chief Hartley. With that, unless there are other questions on this, I will move approval of item 6.10 in our consent business.
Second.
Got a motion and a second by councilmember Loman to accept item 6.10 in our consent business. Hearing no further council discussion. Ms. Eicheldinger.
Carter? Aye. Coulter?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries 6-0. Item 6.12.
Mayor, I'm actually wondering if it might make more sense to do item 6.13 first, since 6.12 is one that's likely to generate a little more conversation.
That would be a fine idea. Item 6.13, councilmember Carter?
That is councilmember Carter.
So this will be quick. I just want to recuse myself from voting on this item due to a potential conflict of interest.
Very good. Thank you for bringing that forward. So councilmember Carter recusing herself.
Mayor, I'll make the motion. I will move to terminate agreement with the Toll Administrative Services Corporation.
Second.
Motion by councilmember Coulter, a second by councilmember Loman to accept item 6.13 in the consent agenda. Hearing no further council questions. Ms. Eicheldinger.
Carter? Abstaining. Coulter?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries 5-0 with councilmember Carter abstaining. Item 6.12.
Mayor, this, I think a number of us had requested to hold this, so maybe it's better that you or Mr. Verbrugge tee this up.
Indeed. This is the resolution to establish restrictions on water usage here in the city of Bloomington. Mr. Verbrugge, if you could, I think we've done a good job of communicating thus far. I've talked to a lot of people who already know about this and are aware of this. I think I've seen it on social media, and folks not only are aware, but I think they're pretty understanding and see where we are in terms of the drought in Minnesota and the water usage, how it affects, is affected by that. But Mr. Verbrugge, if you could just talk us through this, so everybody can hear, here at the council, on the council, and whoever's watching at home.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Councilmember Coulter, we also have our utility superintendent, Scott Anderson, is here, as well as our public works director, Carl Keel. So if I miss any of the salient points, I'm sure they'll jump up and rescue me. The action that's before you is to implement restrictions on water usage. The statewide drought report that came out on Thursday morning, which is a weekly updated report that comes from the state, 72% of the state of Minnesota is in severe drought. And there are, there's a pretty good swath of Minnesota that's actually in extreme drought. I don't think that's a surprise to anybody if they're paying attention to what's going on. So the, we get about 20% of our water supply from the city of Minneapolis. 80% of it is generated from the aquifers that we tap ourselves. But the language in the city of Minneapolis agreement is essentially a me-too kind of clause, or a you-too kind of clause, that at the point that Minneapolis implements restrictions on water usage, we're required to follow suit and do that as well. And now, having said that, we were having conversations about water restrictions, even if Minneapolis had not taken that action. So the restrictions that are going to be in place, sprinkling of lawns is not allowed between the hours of 12:00 and 6:00 p.m. under any circumstance. If you have an even number address, in other words, you're on the even side of your street, you are allowed to water on even-numbered days. Just don't do it between 12:00 and 6:00. And if you live on the odd side of the street, you can number on odd numbers days, just don't do it between 12:00 and 6:00. There's also a, an exemption if you have new trees, if you have bushes or vegetable gardens, that you are able to hand-water those. You can do that on any day, but just don't do it between 12:00 and 6:00. So just like, leave the water off between 12:00 and 6:00. And then, you know, we're going to continue to monitor this. We, you know, we have not been seeing water shortages in Bloomington. I want to make that clear. But the water restrictions are the right thing to do, both to manage the surface water, but also the groundwater reserve. And since 80% of our water does come from groundwater, we want to be good stewards of that as well. So that's the action that's being initiated this evening, and we'll keep the council and the community apprised as conditions change. And at some point in the future, if it becomes advisable to lift that restriction, we'll make sure that we use all of our communication vehicles to do that. So let me look at Scott and Carl and see if I got anything wrong there. I'm getting a thumbs up. Okay, good.
I see councilmember Nelson and then councilmember Loman. I do want to question, though, you mentioned if things improve and they are lifted, we'll certainly communicate. But if things worsen, this is not necessarily the final word on this, correct?
That is correct, Mr. Mayor. I'm the eternal optimist, so I appreciate you drinking from a half-empty glass, that, you know, there may be more severe restrictions, but those are not being contemplated at this time.
Thank you. Councilmember Nelson and then councilmember Loman. Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. Just have a few quick questions here. Most of these I received from people within the community. There was some concerns in terms of city water usage, and so there could be some conversation about what the city is doing to cut back on its use. Specific concerns came up regarding flushing fire hydrants, which lets a lot of water go out, car washing events, which I'm actually sympathetic to, because they raise funds generally for youth groups in our community, which is positive, but obviously there's a detriment of putting more water that those use. And then, what about private car washing at people's houses as opposed to like using water for lawn or gardens or things like that? So maybe if those could be addressed for the community, that would be great.
Mr. Verbrugge?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, as far as the city operations go, we are being responsible about our actions as well. The, I was just going to the information that I sent out to council earlier, and I see that I neglected to include that. My apologies, councilmember Nelson. So we are controlling our irrigation systems to be in compliance with the order. And for the folks that have operations, like councilmember mentioned, especially the flushing of hydrants, things like that, those types of activities, if they're necessary to do, will be done responsibly, and we'll certainly be doing them at, I think, a lesser amount than we would do before. The restrictions, Scott, can you speak to the? The restrictions, Scott, can you speak to the restrictions as it applies to commercial operations, such as car washes that people might drive through, or, or other events like that?
Absolutely. Mayor, councilmembers. So, at this time, the restrictions, as outlined by the city manager, strictly relate to irrigation, lawn watering, basically. They do not apply to residential car washing, they don't, they don't apply to commercial car washing. So, these are, again, restrictions, just strict, just strictly relating to lawn irrigation. At such time, if, you know, following up on, on the mayor's question, if, if, if the state drought plan triggers subsequent phases, that's when you could potentially see restrictions or bans on non-essential uses, which could then, then get into the, the residential car washing and things of that nature. You start talking about, you know, business and things, businesses and, and things like that, commercial car washes. I think it's a little different conversation that, that we'd be looking for some guidance from, from the state on. With regard to hydrant flushing, our current hydrant flushing program, that's a, that's a specific water quality-related program to move and flush sediment out of those, what we refer to as, as dead-end mains. So, to, to prevent that material from entering residential or, or commercial systems, we flush those lines. That said, that material is completely inert, not harmful, doesn't cause any issues, other than, you know, it's not as clear, and, and people may find it aesthetically unpleasing. But why, that's why we, why we continue with that program. We are looking, reviewing that program now, trying to determine, we're trying to better optimize flush times. They are calculated, it's not a random, stand there and let the water go. It's, it's based on the volume in that main, and then the actual turnover, to make sure we get, maintain that clear water. My forget, oh, city, city operations, we are, those, number of those has been reviewed. Irrigation at some sites has been discontinued at this time, and I know in talking with our, our maintenance superintendent, ball fields and things are, are being irrigated within the restrictions and the guidelines, but some of the outer fringe areas, they're starting to dial back on, and, and we'll be reviewing those sites on a, as needed, on a case-by-case basis.
Councilmember Nelson, did that answer your questions? Was there anything else?
Yeah, I got a couple of other questions. Just a quick follow-up, and I don't expect an answer, because I sent something to the city manager just like an hour before the meeting, but I know the city of Burnsville actually set out an explicit goal for their operations to cut back on that. And I'm just wondering if the city of Bloomington has or is considering a actual goal for water reduction. Again, it was an hour ago, I know no one's had any time to look into that issue, but if you have any thoughts on it, I appreciate that. The other question I have is, because of the drought, are we seeing any changes to what is in the aquifer, to the amount of groundwater that's in there, and any concerns about that? I remember talking about that a few years back, with regards to the aquifer that we get our water from, and just wondering what impact, if any, we're seeing there.
Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, the second, with regard to the second question, changes in our aquifer levels, we monitor those levels continuously. We haven't seen really any decline in those levels. Coming into the season, we had probably over, you know, since the last five years or so, significant bounce back or increases to those levels. As you can imagine, weather, climate and weather, you know, patterns that we're in now, droughts are going to affect your surface waters a lot more quickly and noticeably than, than your groundwater aquifers. Certainly, we're sensitive to those resources, but we're continuing to monitor those. And at this time, there's, there's virtually no change in those levels. I don't expect to see any, to see anything in the near future. I don't, we'll keep, we'll keep monitoring that, but we're very comfortable with, with the production of our wells and those aquifer levels. The first question, we do have a reduction goal. I don't have the specific number in front of me, but it's somewhere on the order of 5 million gallons a day. So, what that mean, so, kind of put that in perspective, our, our winter daily demand, so kind of your, just your strict indoor water use is probably somewhere in the, in the neighborhood of 7 to 8 million gallons a day. Last week, I think our daily demand was hovering around 17 to 18 million gallons a day. So, the, the city of Minneapolis, for example, has a reduction goal of, of, or the statewide drought plan has a, a general reduction goal of trying to achieve, in the current phase, 50%, 50% increase above your January demand. We have, because we have, because we're a groundwater supplier, we've got, our, our water supply plan outlines somewhat different goals and, and, and responses to something like this. But it turns out to be quite similar to that 50% above your January demand. So, so basically, we'd be, we would be, through, through these measures and other measures that, that we can take, we're, you know, we'd be looking to reduce, like I said, about five, 5 million gallons a day off of where we are currently, to get that, you know, closer, you know, what looks like 50% above your January demand. And so, as we, as these restrictions become official, assuming the, if these restrictions become official tonight, and as we go forward, continuing to promote wise water use and, and different conservation measures, we'll be monitoring that, that day-to-day demand to see how we're doing, and, and then go from there. Hopefully, we get some rain and demand, demand slows down a little bit.
Thank you. That answered all my questions, and very complete answer. Appreciate it.
Sure.
True.
Councilmember Loman?
Just a question and a comment. So, I, and I kind of know the answer to this one, but I'm going to ask it anyways. The noon to 6:00, why the restriction on that?
Mayor, Councilmember Loman, so, kind of just generally, irrigation during the, the middle part of the day, the hottest part of the day, is, is very inefficient. And so, that's, that's, it's, it's kind of just a, you're chasing, chasing your tail, so to speak. So, we're really trying to, to discourage and, and restrict and eliminate outdoor irrigation during those times. And so, focusing on the, you know, the evenings or the early mornings, if people still need to, to irrigate.
Thanks for that.
One more, I'm sorry, one more thing. And the noon to 6:00 was, was simply, those were the, that was the time slot that, that Minneapolis went with, and, and we felt, for the sake of messaging and consistency, it made it much simpler for, for both customers.
Well, thank you for clarifying that. And then, just for my comment, I sit on a certain commission with the city of Bloomington, I think we know which one it is, the Sustainability Commission. We had a conversation around this particular item, and I know that, I just wanted to share with the rest of the council, this, I think that there's a real interest kind of going forward, to try to look at this issue and try to figure out ways in which that we can, you know, be as, Mayor, you put it, a, you know, a city of example, that people want to come and see around this issue, around water. So, I'll just leave my comments at that, but I hope that we can look to do that next year.
Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm wondering if staff could talk a little bit about the plans for enforcement with regard to these instructions? How, you know, how, how essentially are these going to be enforced?
Mayor, Councilmember Coulter, at this time, you know, we're, we're kind of working on, so we don't, we don't currently have staff set aside to, to patrol and, and enforce, you know, potential violators. We're relying on observations in our normal duties. Calls we may receive, we'll, we'll take down information and, and respond as efficiently and as comprehensively as we can. We'll start out with some information, warning letter of sorts, and then if the resolution is presented, is approved, that would evolve to a $25 fine, and subsequent $25 fines to, to confirmed violations.
Thank you. And I, I raised that issue, it was explained well in the information, but I, I raised that just to sort of emphasize the point that you made, that, you know, we're not going to have the sprinkler police out patrolling neighborhoods and, and that kind of thing. And I, you know, I think this, this reminds me of, of a lot of things that we've talked about over the last couple of years, that, you know, in, in sort of Civics 101, this would be what we call a social contract. This is just one of those things that we're, we're just all agreeing to do with each other. And it, it's not, you know, again, the, the penalties are not severe, this is not like something we're really going to be, you know, hard on people about, but there is a purpose here. This is something that we're doing to make things better for, for our neighbors, to take care of each other. And that's kind of how we handle a lot of things at the city. And I, I think that's just a really important point to make, like I said, especially given some of the things that have happened in the last couple of years. And then the last thing I'll say, I don't mean to make light of a, a very serious, very important issue, but sometimes someone just tees up a joke and you can't let it go. I want to clarify that when the city manager refers to the odd side of the street, that is not a judgment of the folks who live there, but rather the numerical addresses.
Thank you for the clarification, Councilmember Coulter, and, and thank you for your comments as well. I, I agree. I don't, I don't think anyone here, I don't think anyone at City Hall wants our, our city staff to turn into the water police. That, that isn't the goal here, and it isn't punitive to go after anyone that this is, this is, as you said, this is a, a contract that we're, we're kind of all in together. And I would really appeal to our, our residents, just, I understand this ban, and I can understand if perhaps you miss a day or, or make a mistake every now and again, but for goodness sake, we're, we're in the midst of a drought that we haven't seen, the likes we haven't seen in, at least a decade. So, I would hope that everybody would, would comply with this as, as, until we can get to the other side of this and maybe get some rain, hopefully in the near future. Mr. Verbrugge, anything to add?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. I won't take the bait on Councilmember Coulter's second comment. I, I will say, though, that the comments from the mayor and the councilmember on the expectations by residents, not just for our enforcement action, but also of their neighbors, I think is really important. I would go a step further and say, this is really an opportunity to develop a little bit of neighborly camaraderie. First of all, if you see somebody in your neighborhood who is violating the water ban, I don't think that your first call should be to us. I think, I think it would be really nice to just walk across the street and have a conversation, or walk next door and have a conversation. And let's not assume that everybody in town is always watching social media, or always watching the news, and is aware that there's a watering restriction. So, you know, maybe proceed with a little bit of forgiveness, because I do understand it's aggravating when you see somebody violating ordinances and you're following the rules. I get that. The best way to communicate this is word of mouth. So, for folks who are committed to this, make sure you're getting out and talking to your neighbors.
Well put. Thank you. Anything to add, council? Anything else? Seeing no one with additional questions or comments, I would move item 6.12. I think we had a bunch of folks who held it, but just to simplify things, I will be happy to move item 6.12. Second. We've got a motion and a second by Councilmember Martin to adopt item 6.12 on our, on our consent agenda. Hearing no further discussion, Ms. Eicheldinger.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries six zero. Thank you. And thanks for the, for the questions, and thanks for the explanation and, and the clarification. I appreciate it. Move on to item seven in our agenda this evening, which is our hearings, resolutions, and ordinances. We have two public hearings this evening, the first being a public hearing on the resolution regarding the proposed changes to fees and our charges schedule. And I believe our city attorney, Melissa Manderscheid, is going to tee this one up for us. Ms. Manderscheid?
Thank you, Mayor and members. This is kind of an exciting thing for us. We've been reviewing our process internally for our case management, and have been working closely with our vendor, as well as our internal IT department, and creating internal connections with databases that are internal as well as external. And as a result of that, we have been able to diminish the amount of staff touching. We've been improving efficiency, diminishing data entry, and as a result of all these integrations and all these efforts by these multiple departments in the city, we have been able to lower our fees. We did an analysis, and we're going to be able to cut our fees pretty dramatically. So, we decided that it would make sense to do it sooner rather than later, and wanted to bring this for your consideration mid-year. And essentially, we are cleaning it all up and changing it from somewhere around 50 bucks down to $35 per case.
Council questions? You explained it so well, no question, chair. Very good. This is a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing on item 7.1, a public hearing on a resolution regarding the proposed changes to fees and charges scheduled. Would anyone like to speak on item 7.1 here in the council chambers? Anyone coming forward to speak on item 7.1? If not, Ms. Wilson, is there anyone on the phone who'd like to speak to item 7.1?
Nora? Caller, is this Nora?
Yes, ma'am.
Nora, do we have any callers on the line that wish to speak on agenda item 7.1?
There are no participants via phone line at this time, ma'am. You may proceed.
Thank you.
We have no one on the phone wishing to speak on item 7.1. One last call here in the council chambers. Seeing no one coming forward, council, I'd look for a motion to close the public hearing. So, move, second. We've got a motion by Councilmember Martin, a second by Councilmember Loman to close the public hearing, item 7.1. No further council discussion. Ms. Eicheldinger.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries six zero. Public hearing is closed. Council, any questions or comments on this? It's, I appreciate the legal department's work on this, to, to dig into it and find an opportunity to reduce fees. So, well done on that. Thank you. Anything, any questions? If not, I'd look for action. Mayor, I'm happy to make the motion. Councilmember Martin?
Mayor, I will move that we adopt a resolution approving an amendment to the legal department's fees in the 2021 schedule of fees and charges for services provided by departments and divisions of the city of Bloomington, Minnesota, other than those otherwise established by ordinance.
Second.
We've got a motion by Councilmember Martin, a second by Councilmember Loman to adopt the resolution amending the legal department's fees for the 2021 schedule of fees and charges. No further council discussion on this? Ms. Eicheldinger.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries six zero. Item 7.2, our second and final public hearing for the evening, is on our increase in franchise fees. And we started this discussion a couple of weeks back, and Lori Economy Sholler is going to lead us through this, and I think we'll also have a discussion about a lot of the public outreach that went into this as well, because I know quite a bit did. So, good evening, Miss Economy Sholler.
Good evening, Mayor and council. This evening, it's the public hearing on the franchise fee increase. Presenting is myself, the CFO, and then Julie Long, the city engineer, and Bob Simon, senior civil engineer, be available for questions at the end of the presentation. And part of the presentation this evening will include just an overview of the purpose and the history on the franchise fee, a little discussion on the four scenarios and the council direction, we'll provide an update on the public engagement, and then we'll be available for any questions the council may have. So, on the purpose and history, next slide, Chris, please. The purpose of the franchise fee was to have a program that was to implement changes in the funding for the payment management program. Council made the commitment to maintain a sustainable, predictable, and consistent funding source to fund the payment management, street overlay, seal coat, trail construction, and maintenance, and the right-of-way for trail construction and maintenance. And they just wanted these as, you know, these are part of the core city services. We had some discussion on the 28th about tax levy. Tax levy, you know, could be a dedicated source, but there is much more volatility on the year-to-year funding sources and economic conditions of the city at each year or so. The franchise fees was a much more dedicated source. On the next slide, when we looked through and created the franchise fee back in 2015, we established that we would have that fee for a five-year period. At this time, 2021 is the sixth year at the same rate for those fees. Then in 2016, we began collecting the franchise fee, and in 16 to present, we funded- And in 16 to present, we funded payment management overlay, the seal coat, park trails, construction and maintenance, and the right-of-way trail construction and maintenance. And then as we moved through, in July of 2019, we did have a discussion with council about possible inclusion of the sidewalks at that time in the franchise fee financial model. And at that point, and still to this day, there is no sidewalk improvements budgeted with tax levy dollars. In 2020, when we looked at COVID impact on the financial, the residents and the changes, and just what staff was able to accomplish the capacity, we were able to put that sixth year of the same rate in there. And at this point, we do need a fee increase to maintain the program. So on the scenarios, we can just go to the next two, Chris. What we presented to the council on the 28th was the four scenarios. One was at 55 cents, and that's status quo. So we would just continue to do the exact same thing. We went advanced trails, the trails for Normandale, and others would start in 2026. The current funding at the 55 cent scenario, one, did include funding for the Dred Scott program. Scenario two was building on scenario one. And we added some sidewalk improvements. And then in that, it's still a couple of years out there. And then we also advanced the trails. So we would be able to move the Normandale Trail up from 2026 to 2024. And in scenario three and four, we added sidewalks. The Nicollet Avenue one in 2027. And then further on, we looked at the Portland ones and other multi-agency bikeways. When council had a discussion about a month ago, we looked at, you know, what is the cost of those sidewalk improvements for Nicollet and those other ones? Currently forecasted in the model would be about $5.5 million worth of sidewalk projects in those two big projects of Portland and Nicollet only. And so with the 85 cent increase in the residential piece and the other increases for the commercial, that would fund the sidewalk improvements, so that 5.5 million in the future would, so it would be more of a pay-as-you-go versus a tax levy. If we did, at that point, we'd have to look at the cost again of issuing debt. And that would generally be over a 10-year period moving forward. So future residents would pay for those costs versus putting them in now and starting to collect and be able to have the funds to pay for them as we go. On the next slide, it just looks at different trail scenarios for the residents. It has the park trails in red that have been done or will be done, the right-of-way trails. The sidewalks are in gray, and you can see those predominantly on the east side. And then just other park improvements, again, at the 85 cents. And then moving through to the next slide, we'd look at how many miles we would start doing of the trails, starting in 2024. And then consistent trails with that. And then sidewalks would start in 2025. And we would move through that through the funding and process for that. So on the following slide for scenario four, we are currently, the next slide, please, Chris. So currently proposed now in 2021 for start of 2022 is the 85 cents for residential, the commercial areas at the $1.70 up to $26 increase and so forth. We also modeled this for every other year increase. So we would be back in 2023 and 2025. Should there be other funding sources or state or federal grants that could help the project? Maybe later in the agenda, there might be something identified for this. We could maybe move the next increase out for a three-year period of time. So we would be here back in 2024 for a 2025 implementation. And then on public engagement, on the next slide. We've updated this as of this morning. You know, when we had the conversation a month ago, we talked about the National Community Survey and the huge support in our survey and the community surveys that we do do over the last several years was support for trails. The Parkmaster Plan is being developed and will be coming before the council at the end of August. And that was a lot of trail improvements there. We had an open house here on July 14th. It was a rainy day, the one and only rainy day probably in July. And no one came to our open house. I mean, the rain had stopped by the time the open house opened up, but no one was here. We were directing traffic to other meetings in the building. The poll questions, we do get on the poll. If anyone went out to the Let's Talk Bloomington page, 60% of the people that have visited and did take the poll do support the full utilization of trails and sidewalk improvements. So with that, the presentation is what we have for you this evening. Julie and Bob and I are here for questions.
Thank you very much. Council, questions on this? I think we had the discussion within the past month or so about the direction we wanted to see this go. And we think, I think we teed it up with the thought we'd see what kind of public feedback we got on this proposal. And it's, there's not been much, which either tells me everybody's in favor of it or people are not paying attention because it's summer, but I'm not sure. Or probably a little both, exactly. Any questions of Ms. Economy Sholler on this? Councilmember Loman?
Thank you. So I did look at that poll out there, and is it really just 10 people or? I just, I kept flipping on it, thinking, I got it wrong, I got it wrong. It can't be 10, maybe it's 100, right? Is it really just 10 people?
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmember Loman. Actually, it's 11. We had one more this afternoon.
It wasn't me. 10% increase. So when we say here in this poll questions here, 67%, we're talking about the 11 people, right? That's where we're getting that data. I just want to be sure that I'm clear about that, because I mean it. Okay, well then, I just have a couple of comments then.
Councilmember.
Thank you. So I think one of the things that I would like to see that we try to do is, you know, what I really like in this presentation here is really lay out for the trails piece. And I know that when we originally talked about this many years ago, that we were going to embed this trail piece in here. And I think it's great that we have a place for that. But I just, I'm hoping and really wanting us to also kind of lock down from a long-term perspective where the sidewalk piece goes. It's nice to see the Nicollet, or pardon me, the Portland piece in here. Pardon me, Nicollet, and I guess Portland's a little bit later on. But to be specifically in here. But really what I'm looking to do is either we, if we could put it in either the CIP or some other place where we would have dollars that would match what we spend on trails going forward, so that we just know that from an equity standpoint, that we're able to, just to kind of ensure us going forward, as we have done with the trails, that we do that with this piece here. And then I have some comments from a councilmember who's not here tonight. Then I want to make sure I mention those as well.
Councilmember, or excuse me, Mr. Verbrugge, a question first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember Loman. To the comment that Councilmember Loman made, my, we did have a chance to talk about this before the meeting. And my suggestion to the council, if that is a commitment that you want to see made, and that is that equity consideration of trails and sidewalks, is when we discuss our CIP next Monday, I think that's a good time to, you know, put that marker in the sand, is to direct staff to make sure that the CIP document that's being prepared has some either alignment or, you know, a matching amount for those different projects. Because that's the, that's the best way to ensure that planning will proceed with that expectation. So as I said, we're going to have more discussion about CIP itself next week. And so I think it's a good topic to bring back with the group again at that point in time.
And so let me just be clear that then tonight, I will not support this because I want to be sure that we do do that as a council, that we do support that. Because I just want to make sure that we, make sure we're equally making sure that our entire city kind of moves forward as opposed to just one side of the city moving forward. So with that being said, let me raise the comments that.
Can I ask you, Councilmember Loman, are these questions specifically? Or should this come after the public hearing, more in the discussion, the council discussion?
Maybe we should wait to the discussion piece. And I know that some of these are questions.
Oh, okay, if they're questions specifically, yeah.
Yeah. So one question that Councilmember Beloga had in terms of looking at this particular program, as we look forward to kind of putting this forward, is when we ask for an increase with this, you know, we've got quite a bit of a windfall from some of our other, from how our budget standpoint is today. And also in terms of, you know, some of the, we'll talk about coming on later on, the American Rescue Plan dollars. When we asked for this particular increase, how does that make sense? I think that's, that was his point that he wanted to make. And the question that he wanted to put forward when we look at this particular increase with this scenario, you know, we have a lot of dollars coming into the city. And I mean, so I guess that's the question that he had for staff. And I wanted to just be sure that that got asked. I don't know if that's a city manager question or, Mr. Verbrugge?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Appreciate that Councilmember Beloga's concern was reflected before the meeting for me as well. So we had a chance to think about that. And the answer, I think, is pretty simple. The, the projects that will be funded through the franchise fees are ones that will depend on a long-term commitment of funds and a, an expectation based on the model that we've laid out. And these projects are programmed in our capital improvement plan for 10 years, and they're on the books for even longer beyond that. Our long-term model for financing them has to make certain assumptions. I would say that the discussion we're going to have after this public hearing about the American Rescue Plan Act and the funds that have come to the city are, in many respects, short-term dollars. And this agenda item, along with the next one about the legislative requests, are talking about long-term capital reinvestment needs. And they are going to require resources to be carefully planned for and committed over the course of time. And frankly, the infusion of the short-term money from the federal government sounds like a lot of money, but it's not in the context of the cost of all of these projects cumulatively. And so it gives us, the ARP dollars, when we discuss that, give us a good cushion. I don't even want to say good cushion. It gives us a little bit of relief from what was a pretty dire financing situation. And I would say that what we have before the council tonight is not responding to a dire financial situation. This is part of a plan that was laid out back in 2016 that showed the need for occasional increases in the franchise fees to keep up with that long-term model, to continue funding necessary infrastructure reinvestment and the addition of some things that the council wanted to see more of. So hopefully that answers that question.
Yeah, most of it, you did. I just wanted to just press down even further, though. We have, you know, some taxpayers may say that if you look at, you know, how we did this year, and I know those dollars aren't out there for folks to see, there may be the question, which I think is a good one. Do we did very well? You know, the receipts are coming in well. How do we justify still, again, this additional, you know, 85 cent increase that we're looking to do here?
Yep, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember Loman. Yes, we did not end 2020 in as bad a financial shape as we anticipated back in April or May. And that was largely the result of federal funds that came in last year. And I would say this year, it is going to be the same. What also needs to be mentioned is that our base has declined precipitously. So the fact that we have a balanced budget, actually, it's not structurally balanced. Councilmembers know that, right? We're still utilizing what we referred to as our, you know, our levy mitigation strategy, right, because of some of those federal funds and some of the positive budget variance that we had. But our base is much reduced. So the amount of non-property tax revenue that we are factoring into our budget is several million dollars less than our starting point at the beginning of 2020 before the pandemic. So for those who think the city is somehow in an improved financial situation, I would say that we are in a less dire financial situation.
Thanks for that clarification. And I think that gives us a better framework by which to look at this particular proposal in its proper context. Thank you for those clarifications.
Mayor and city manager, I do have an overhead, if I can have the overhead, on the numbers. If you want to look at that. So just letting council know that collections, are these numbers coming down here? 2020, we did collect just over $5 million in franchise fees for the entire year from all sources. We're assuming the same for 2021, but we're in connection, calls with both Excel and CenterPoint. They are seeing a little bit higher delinquencies, so we might not reach that $5 million. If we looked at scenario one at the 55 cents, that brings in $740,000. And each of these others is another $390,000 for a total of that $1,013,000. So even if there is positive performance in the general fund to move to strategic priorities, which I think is a higher dedication to tax mitigation in our future budgets for the next several years, this one here would need quite a bit of money to offset a fee increase. And it would just be a temporary Band-Aid for another year, and we'd be back again. So the 85 cents is bringing us in $1,013,000. And that would get us the trails and keep us with our current PMP program where it needs to be. So these are the dollars, and I hope this answered the council's question on this. Thank you.
Council, additional questions of staff in this presentation? Councilmember Martin.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Just real quick, so I know obviously in terms of Nicollet and Portland, we've got some collaboration with the county on those projects coming up and allowing us to collaborate there. On Portland in particular, I know I've heard concerns from residents in those neighborhoods about the crossings, especially by Valley View. And I know we've made some improvements here in terms of timing and countdowns on the crosswalks. Would these franchise fees allow us to collaborate on more physical improvements to the road itself? Would those be PMP dollars if it was possible to put in a crossing island or something like that? Do these dollars help us out with that, or is that another pile?
Mayor and Councilmember Martin, in regards to the crossings, I believe these franchise fees dollars, if we were able to contribute them towards sidewalk, that could help us with those crossing locations. If we start looking at implementations of like an RFB system or HOC signals or things of that sort, there'd probably have to be other funding sources that would, that would help with that, county possibly. But in regards to the crossings themselves, these franchise fees dollars could help for the sidewalk improvements for those crossings. But if we start getting into signals and things of that nature, then we'd have to start looking at the county or others, maybe grant funding for items like that.
Okay, that's helpful, thank you.
Yep.
Council, additional questions? If not, this is a public hearing. And at this time, I'd like to open the public hearing on item 7.2, which is our proposal to increase franchise fees here in the city of Bloomington. Is there anyone here in the council chambers who wishes to speak on this issue? Anyone wishing to come forward? Seeing no one coming forward, Ms. Wilson, do we have anyone on the phone who'd like to speak to item 7.2?
Nora, this is Chris, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Nora, do we have any callers that wish to speak on agenda item 7.2?
You have Lona Galisandro who wishes to speak. Madam, your line is open. Thank you. Hi, folks, how are you?
Good evening, welcome.
Thank you for letting me speak tonight. I have a couple of comments and then a couple of questions which you don't have to answer tonight, but maybe there's interest in talking amongst yourselves about them. So number one, I think dedicated funds, generally speaking, are a good idea for these kinds of projects. of projects. I think Minnesotans are used to them. When you think about the gas tax that we have that goes to pay for our roads, this feels the same. I know the city manager probably hates the fact that I used the word "tax" there, but either way, dedicated funds for this are generally a good idea, so I'm in support of that. I'd also say that while I think that the trail stuff is good, I would like the council to consider that sidewalks, and not just on Nicolet in Portland where there's an opportunity to collaborate with the county, but generally speaking, are an equity issue that I think citywide need to be considered. And if the Parks Master Plan has other funding sources for our trails, maybe prioritizing the sidewalks over the trails is a good idea. Now, I love our trails, and I want to see us expand those things, but I also know that there are many places in the city where, you know, inaccessibility is a problem for wheelchair users, for the elderly, for folks who need to, you know, move heavy equipment via carts and things like that. And I think it's something to consider. And then, so those are my comments. And then in terms of questions, things for you all to think about, the one comment that I heard as part of the discussion around funding, mainly asked the question, are the dollars that we're considering here, that 85 cent increase and everything, kind of already spent? Meaning, have we decided what we're going to do with them already? And this is just a matter of going and getting that funding? And then the second question that I had was, you know, why would it be five years or more till we could get to the sidewalks? And I guess that's related to my first comment, or my second comment, which was maybe prioritizing sidewalks is a good idea. But, you know, I think I heard that it was something like 2026 or 2027 until we would get to sidewalk stuff. And that seems like a really long time to address an equity issue in our city. And then the last question that I have was really just, does anybody know who pays for these fees? In other words, I would imagine there are some apartments where, you know, heat and utility fees are included, in which case the residents aren't paying for that, but the commercial owners of the properties are paying for that, and so on and so forth. And so do we know whether or not this is something that's being kind of broad-brust painted across every resident in the city? Or is there concentrations based on, you know, the way that people pay their utilities? Just some ideas to think about, and if you all have those questions too, I think it's important for us to address those. Otherwise, I've got nothing else. Thank you for your time. Really appreciate it.
Thank you for the call. And I think the questions that were asked, I think, are pretty easy to answer here, and I'm not sure if Ms. Economy Sholder or Mr. Verbrugge, do you want to take these on? Mr. Verbrugge?
Let me jump into a couple here, and then I'll let the team fill them out. The caller's comments about sidewalks as an equity issue has been discussed with the city council before. As a matter of fact, when we were first starting to demonstrate how we would look at policy issues through the lens of racial equity, our city engineer and her team actually looked at the sidewalks as a good example of how we might go through that exercise. So that is a, that is a point that is top of mind for our staff. The question of if the 85 cent increase is already spent, I would say yes with an asterisk. Yes, in that we have a long-term model for how our pavement management program works, and we know the projects that are in there, and how much it will cost to do those projects, and what level of revenue it will take to pay for those projects. The asterisk is that it is always going to be, you know, up to the council to determine if any project is appropriate at that point in time, or if there are other projects that you want to substitute into the model. So it's really a timing of when we do projects and which projects we're doing. But the 85 cent increase in the franchise fee is funding the model for investment that we've developed, and that's with the projects that are in our capital improvement plan. The five to six years to do the sidewalks, Mr. Simon can probably answer this a little bit better, but the fact is that we have those sidewalks adjacent to county roadways that are programmed for reconstruction. We don't want to do the sidewalks ahead of the county reconstruction program. Is that essentially correct?
City Manager Verbrugge, yes, that is correct. Yep.
And then who's paying for the fees? If there's a little bit more clarity from either view about how much we know, especially about rental communities, and if there's information about the number that are paying their utilities directly, or the number that have utilities paid for by their rental agreement through the landlord?
Mayor, council, city manager, on the who pays piece, Excel and CenterPoint administer the program, so it would be through their customer base. So we do not have access to know which ones of the apartment buildings might be based off the building versus individual units. Not to put anybody on the spot, but we do have Michelle Swanson from Excel Energy in the room here. If she has greater detail on that, she may be able to answer that question. But I think it's just based off the units, and that's all the detail. We, as a city, we don't know their customer base. For example, in one of their commercial groups that CenterPoint had, there was only four businesses, and they wouldn't give us that, how many were in there, because they didn't even want us to know who they might be, because they keep that data very secure, and it's their data. So I don't have that details.
Ms. Swanson, if you'd be willing to chime in on this, I think it'd be helpful here. Good evening. Welcome.
Good evening, Michelle Swanson with Excel Energy. Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. I don't have a lot more detail than what Lori has. What I can tell you is, most of the apartment buildings that have been built in the last 10 or 15 years, they all have individual meters for each of the apartments. There's very few apartment buildings left that it's master-metered, where it's just the landlord that's paying for like electricity, et cetera. So, and I can certainly go back and see if we can pull that information for you, and I'll work with Lori if we do. But if we don't, I would just say that the bulk of the multifamily dwellings these days, each residential customer is going to have their own meter, and it's that customer who's going to be paying the franchise fee.
Thank you. That's helpful. I think that answered the questions that were asked from our last caller. Ms. Wilson, do we have anyone else on the line who wishes to speak on this issue?
Nora, do we have any other callers on the line for Agenda Item 7.2?
There are no further comments. Ma'am, you may proceed.
Thank you.
We have no one on the line and no one coming forward, so council, I look for a motion to close the public hearing on item 7.2.
So moved.
Second.
We've got a motion by Councilmember Coulter, a second by Councilmember Loman to close the public hearing. Hearing no further, council discussion. Ms. Eichlberger.
Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
Loman.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Bussie.
Aye.
Motion carries 6-0 to close the public hearing on item 7.2. Council, discussion on this? Questions? Discussion? Where is everybody? I will, I will be happy to kick off. So since we've had, since we've had franchise fees here in Bloomington, I've spoken out against them. I've always said that I prefer to have things upfront and want to see, if we're going to spend money like this, let's make sure it's part of the property tax, make it part of our general fund. And I do believe that, however, as I look at the, as I look at the long-term commitment that the city is able to make to something that residents are clearly in favor of and have been asking us for more, this type of dedicated funding stream makes sense. I really do think that's the case. It's consistent, it's reliable, it's a source of funds that we can, we can plan on and we can, we can build around. And also, this 85 cent increase actually starts to move us forward. I mean, we've heard a member of this body point out that we seem to be treading water, that we're not actually gaining ground on anything, on our, on our parks, or on our trails and our sidewalks and so on. This gives us an opportunity to do so. And so while I am, I'm typically not a fees guy, and would much rather see it be upfront, I can see how it works in this, in this way, and I can see the benefit of it to, to make this long-term commitment, as I said, to something that we have heard from many residents here in the city of Bloomington that they place a high priority on. And I think this is a worthwhile, a worthwhile thing to follow up on. Councilmember Nelson, I see your hand up.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. First, I'd just like to echo your comments. I would probably prefer to do this through the levy, but if this is the funding source, it is what it is. And this is clearly a priority for the community. I mean, I've heard from people about this issue, about trails, about sidewalks, ever since I've worked in, and before that, it's one of the highest priorities that I hear about from people. And I'm glad to see that we're making a commitment to doing that. I agree with Councilmember Loman about making sure that commitment goes across our community and serves the entire population. I've been outspoken about the fact that we have a, you know, we have two very nice paved trails along Normandale, and we have deteriorating sidewalks on Portland. It may be my, near my district, but I don't think it's right. And we need to fix that type of issue. I just have a couple of quick other things. One, I would like to take a look at, and I know we're going to talk about local option sales tax later, some of these may be regional connections that we could utilize loss for, and how that might impact funding in the future. Two, I think this fits a thing that I've talked to people about for a number of years. We have an older community. We have older stuff that needs to be replaced. We did a great Parks Master Plan because I didn't think we should just replace soccer fields and tennis courts with what they were before, but we should think about the future and how people will actually use those and be willing to make the investments in what people are doing now and what we think of doing in the future. Our water utilities, we've seen increases in rates because the pipes are old and they're deteriorating. And we have basic services that this city needs to deliver, and that's how we deliver them. I look at this, even though through franchise fees, as us delivering basic services, like the ability to walk to your neighbor's house, or to safely walk to the store or your neighborhood commercial node, or to bike across the city. These seem like very basic things for a city to provide, and to provide a funding source for them makes absolute sense for me. So I will support this, somewhat begrudgingly about the funding source, but enthusiastically about where the money will go.
Thank you, Councilmember Nelson. Councilmembers, any additional comments? Councilmember Martin?
Thank you very much, Mayor. Just real quickly, and it was touched on by a caller a little bit ago, one of the things I'm most excited about this, and obviously it'll take some additional conversation beyond Nicolet and Portland, is we're looking at the Parks Master Plan in terms of neighborhood service areas, and these kind of smaller park nodes that are offering kind of tailored amenities to the neighborhoods around them. I see this as a huge opportunity to connect this entire system, not only with improved sidewalks because we've had to sand them down too many times, or I'm also thinking of Old Jacoby, they're too close to the road, and that makes folks nervous. But it kind of supercharges our park system as something that functions as a whole, and that folks can enjoy from, from any area of the city. So moving forward, and as we have the final Parks Master Plan in front of us, I'll be curious how some of that, how some of this can be prioritized as linkages in that whole thing.
Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I will also be supporting this, and I, it's interesting, I think, the thoughts that I've had in sort of relation to the ones that you and Councilmember Nelson have expressed, because one of the reasons that I am more comfortable with this is because it's not relying on the levy. I always get a little bit wary when the thought is, we just go back to the same funding source over and over and over and over again. And in, like you say, this, this is a dedicated source. We know it's reliable. We know this is something that we can, we can plan on in a way that I think it's very much harder to do with the property tax levy. And so, you know, and well, I can, I will get into this more when we talk about local option, local option sales tax coming up as well, but I am of the belief that a more diverse menu, as it were, of revenue options for the city is, is better, so that we aren't, you know, consistently going back to property taxpayers and asking them to contribute more and more, that we have other options that are available to our residents. So just my, my thoughts there, but that's, that's something that I think about frequently.
Thank you. Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. So I agree with a lot of what's been said, and I will be supporting this motion tonight. I think in general, where I have a little discomfort is that everybody, my understanding is that everybody pays the same, right? Whether they're a renter or homeowner, and whether they live in a $150,000, $150,000 home, or a $750,000 home, they all pay the same. And so when I look at the trail infrastructure and what's been funded across Bloomington, and there's literally nothing on the east side, so franchise fees, I mean, as it relates to the PMP program, like the overlay and that stuff, I mean, it looks like it's been pretty equitably distributed. But when you look at trails specifically, that's where I, you know, the residents on the east side are not seeing the same benefit of paying franchise fees as it relates to trails. And so, so I'm particularly excited about the conversation around equitable trails and sidewalks. I think we have a lot of work to do there. You know, I think through this option and the funding of the sidewalks on Portland and Nicolet, it's, you know, really exciting. It's definitely something that I have heard a lot of support for in the community. And so, so again, I'll be supporting this motion because it does provide some of those, that infrastructure on the east side, where we know there's been a gap. And then I look forward to ongoing conversations.
Councilmember Loman, anything else to add?
I'll be brief. Want to see if we can get out of here on time tonight. So around this, you know, I think I've stated earlier, I think that, you know, when we look at sustainable policy, and when we set this up with trails, you know, I've gone through education myself, that, you know, hey, trails and sidewalks aren't the same thing. And so I just want to make a statement today for those folks that live on the east side, or really live any, any part, that we, that we just make sure we do that. So certainly I'm supportive. Again, this is not a fee, I always want to call it tax, it's not a fee type of thing that I like to support. But, but it does make some sense in terms of what we're trying to do moving forward with the city, and I thank the staff for all their hard work around this, and I hope that next go-around will, will make this more equitable. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, everyone, for your comments. And we're to the point now, look for action, council. I think I heard general support on this, I would look for action to move this along. Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mayor. I will move that we adopt an ordinance amending Bloomington City Ordinance 2015-38 to amend gas franchise fee on CenterPoint Energy for providing gas service within the city of Bloomington, Minnesota. And for clarification, do we just roll this second motion in?
Well, we'll do, we'll do that separately. We'll do summary publication separate.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Martin, a second by Councilmember Carter, to amend the gas franchise fee on CenterPoint Energy for providing gas service. And just to clarify, that this is option four that we talked about, the 85 cent increase. That's, that was the intention, I think that's what we discussed.
Correct.
Ms. Manisch, had anything to add? Do I need to clarify that further?
Mayor members, that was the clarification we were seeking for.
Very good.
You're seeking to put in motion Scenario Four.
Scenario Four. Absolutely. Yes. Hearing no further, council discussion on this. We have a motion, we have a second. Ms. Eichlberger.
Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
Loman.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Bussie.
Aye.
Motion carries 5-1 with Loman opposing. And Councilmember Martin, summary publication.
Mayor, I will move that we adopt the resolution directing summary publication of ordinance, of the ordinance amending Bloomington City Ordinance 2015-38 to amend the gas franchise fee on CenterPoint Energy for providing gas service within the city of Bloomington, Minnesota.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for summary publication. Hearing no further discussion on this. Ms. Eichlberger.
Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
Loman.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Bussie.
Aye.
Motion for summary publication passes 6-0. Councilmember Martin, would you like to continue?
I'm getting good at it. Let's keep rolling.
Go to it.
Mayor, I will move that we adopt an ordinance amending Bloomington City Ordinance 2015-43 to amend the electric franchise fee on Northern State's Power Company, DBA Excel Energy, for providing electric service within the city of Bloomington, Minnesota.
Aye. Second. It's not even that late yet.
We have a motion by Councilmember Martin, a second by Councilmember Carter, to amend the electric franchise fee on Northern State's Power Company.
And Mayor, just clarifying Scenario Four again on this one.
And I was just going to say, we're clarifying that this is for Scenario Four, which is the 85 cent increase. Any further discussion, council? Hearing none. Ms. Eichlberger.
Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
Loman?
Nay.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye.
Motion carries five, one with Councilmember Loman opposing. And Councilmember Martin, summary publication.
Mayor, I move that we, uh, adopt a resolution directing summary publication, uh, of the ordinance amending Bloomington City Ordinance 2015-43 to amend the electric franchise fee on Northern State's Power Company and doing, doing businesses, Excel Energy for providing electric service within the city of Bloomington, Minnesota.
Second?
I have a motion by Councilmember Martin, a second by Councilmember Carter for summary publication. Hearing no further council discussion. Ms. Eichlberger?
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye.
Motion carries six, zero for summary publication. Thank you, staff. Thank you very much for your work on this. Uh, thanks to our partners at Excel and, and, uh, all the work that you've done on this. Thank you very much. Um, looking forward to moving this forward. I think a lot of folks are and, and look forward to seeing this play out in the coming years in terms of not only the, uh, the overlays, which is, you know, the nuts and bolts kind of stuff, but also the, the improvements of the parks and trails and the sidewalks and so on. So thank you so very much. Ms. Wilson, can we, uh, dismiss, dismiss our operator for the evening?
I believe we can, Mr. Mayor. Nora, this is Chris. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
That concludes the portions of our agenda that would have public comment tonight. So thank you for your assistance. You can go ahead and disconnect the line.
Thank you, everyone, and have a good evening.
Thank you, Nora. Thank you for your work. Moving on to our organizational business, item eight point one, uh, discussion on use of the American Rescue Plan Act funds. Mr. Verbrugge, with this, we've put this off for a couple of meetings. It's good that we're finally able to get to it before eleven o'clock.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Uh, I would agree with you. And, uh, actually that little bit of time actually, I think, made for better recommendation. One of the, the things that we have learned over the past couple of years, uh, well, over the past sixteen months during the pandemic, the, um, the, the federal government has obviously directed a significant amount of money towards states and local governments. And in doing so, they have had to very quickly write the rules associated with those funds. And so the treasury guidance documents have sometimes not kept pace with the distribution of funds. And this was a situation here where, uh, we actually received the first half of our allocation in, in early May, uh, about five point seven million dollars of the eleven point four million total amount. The second half will be conveyed next May, uh, but not all of the treasury guidance had been completed at the time that the funds had been received. So we've had a team of folks working, uh, uh, really hard to understand what the treasury guard, guidance is. And I, I want to, uh, thank them. They've mostly left the chambers, but, uh, in addition to, uh, our CFO, um, in, in legal Marine O'Brien, uh, has been working, uh, very hard to understand the, the federal rules as well as our, um, staff and finance, Amy and, uh, Vijay have, uh, uh, provided really great information for us. So the information that council has and the recommendations for the, um, uh, allocations here, I want the council to be confident that this is consistent with the parameters that have been laid down in the treasury guidance. So, uh, we're only presenting things to you that I think as of today, we're confident are ones that we can, um, that we can justify based on those rules. So, uh, when we put the recommendations together, uh, we looked at what the guidance was, what the intent was and, uh, have broken these down into several categories. The vast majority of the recommendations fall into our, uh, infrastructure bucket, um, about seven point eight million dollars. Uh, we have about one point seven million that we are recommending for public health and public safety, uh, another one point two five million for funds to the community and then an amount of about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars that, uh, we would, uh, uh, leave open for other priorities. So that's a total of eleven point four million dollars. Let me just hit some of the highlights here in these various areas and then would welcome any questions and conversation from councilmembers. In the infrastructure, uh, area, we've broken that down into two different buckets, infrastructure and technology. About seven million dollars being directed towards infrastructure. Four million of that would be directed towards projects, capital projects in our water utility fund, uh, two million dollars towards capital projects in our government facilities fund and then a half million dollars to trail improvement projects and a half million dollars to natural resource management. The one I want to speak to in this category, uh, specifically is the water utility fund. The, uh, this is one of those areas where, uh, the, both the pandemic and the, um, environmental issues the last couple of years have really challenged our, our water operation. Uh, we had a lesser increase in our water, um, utility rate, uh, last year, or well, at the beginning of this year, um, about the end of last year because of the anticipated economic impact to, uh, ratepayers and, um, property taxpayers and residents in our community. Uh, so by having a lesser rate increase than, uh, we felt was necessary, we've, we, we've seen, uh, a shorting of the long-term model. Uh, we also last year, uh, last couple of years sold a lot less water than we typically do, which, uh, is ironic today because we're in a water conservation mode, uh, and I would say that our operation always has conservation as a value and, uh, we need to sell water, uh, to make sure that the enterprise is, um, viable. So the last couple of years, we haven't sold as much water as was necessary to keep up with the model, uh, and we have fixed costs for producing the water. So if we don't sell water, you know, we're, we're operating at a, at a deficit there. So I would say that this is one of those funds that, uh, if, if I were going to peg as being a crisis situation, this is a crisis situation, that, uh, within the next couple of years, our working capital balance hits about fourteen percent. And as council is aware, we like to see our working capital balances in that eighty-five to a hundred percent at least, um, for our long-term model. So by directing, uh, four million dollars towards capital projects in the water utility fund, uh, it will, uh, provide relief to that fund, uh, and immediately helps our long-term model for the working capital goal. The same is true for the facilities fund. It's not to the same extent in terms of the, you know, the concern that we have on the long-term model, except to say that our, our facilities, uh, are, uh, of a certain age and in need of rehabilitation or replacement. And so there is a lot of, uh, demand, uh, in the next ten years and beyond in our facilities fund. And so this is similarly going to provide some relief to that long-term model. The, the trail improvement projects, um, as indicated in the memo to council, uh, will have the benefit of allowing us to, um, uh, supplement the long-term model with some revenue that may allow us to push out by a year, uh, a necessary next increase in the rate adjustment for, um, the pavement management program. And then for natural resource management, uh, we know that we have, uh, some recommendations that will be coming as part of our park system master plan. We don't have resources dedicated there. So this will start, uh, uh, that, uh, allocation of resources. One thing I should say is, uh, a reminder that funds do not need to be expen- expended until the end of twenty twenty-four. And in some cases, as long as they're committed in twenty-four, they don't need to be expended until, uh, twenty-six. We have some time therefore to identify the projects, uh, in this area, uh, that we would allocate these funds for. And then in the area of technology, um, this is another fund that I would say is in, um, uh, a precarious state and it has just about the exact same number on that working capital balance, about fourteen percent in the next couple of years. Uh, so the difference between the recommendation here and what's in the, uh, the water utility fund, the projects that we're recommending to support here, six hundred and fifty thousand for fiber projects that would complete the redundant loop of our, um, fiber, uh, system and, and then, uh, some smaller, um, project funds. These are, these are projects that are not currently funded in our, uh, long-term model for our IT fund. And these are projects that have merit and really need to be completed. So this, uh, this allocation towards technology will not provide relief to the IT fund, but it will allow us to do projects that we otherwise won't have the funding for. Um, so we'll have to continue to manage the challenges in the IT fund. Public health and, uh, public safety, uh, one point seven million dollars in this area, a half million dollars of that going to, uh, public health in, uh, three different project areas that, uh, I'm happy to talk, uh, a little bit more about. But the significant amount here is one to, one point two million dollars towards our fire department. Uh, and this is the only recommendation amongst these, uh, that really, um, is, that is, is allocated towards an ongoing financial commitment and that's the addition of three new, uh, full-time battalion chief positions. Uh, Chief Seal is here. He can speak in more detail, uh, to the, the staffing situation that is, um, contributing to this need. But council first heard about this when we did the fire department service assessment and, uh, and, uh, things have only, uh, I would say, uh, uh, declined since then in terms of the number of calls, uh, that, um, we have adequate coverage for and our command staff is making up for that coverage. And so our command staff frankly is getting run ragged right now and it's just not sustainable from an employer-employee, uh, perspective, but also just from an operational perspective. Uh, we have, uh, begun modeling into our future general fund budgets, how to handle this because we would be using these funds in twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four and then the full impact would come on in twenty-five. So our future modeling and the tax mitigation, uh, approach that we've talked about, um, will factor these in. So that's the public health and public safety. And then in the area of funds to the community, we're, uh, recommending one point million, uh, one million dollars going to community development for three different project areas. A half million towards neighborhood development center that would, uh, uh, help build capacity for assisting small and BIPOC businesses, uh, to help grow our small business sector. Then two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for, uh, down payment housing assistance program. This is a key, uh, strategic priority for the council, making sure that we have more money to, uh, move people into homeownership. And then homelessness response and prevention services, uh, in ongoing, uh, effort that we have here coming out of the pandemic, uh, to address, uh, issues of homelessness that, uh, existed in Bloomington prior to the pandemic, but were exacerbated as a result and are likely going to continue to persist for some time. Uh, we've already committed two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the Bloomington Convention and Visitors Bureau. That action was taken in June. The remainder, the six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, there is, uh, an allowance within the, uh, American Rescue Plan Act and the treasury guidance, uh, for claiming, uh, revenue loss. Uh, we will not have a problem documenting revenue losses. I indicated it as part of that, uh, the, the previous item. Uh, our, our base for non-property tax revenue, specifically lodging and admissions tax, uh, declined precipitously from where it was a year and a half ago and that, uh, that amount of loss is where we can claim revenue loss. Uh, we then have to be able to allocate it towards, uh, qualifying general governmental services, uh, and we won't have a problem doing that within the treasury guidance as well. What this effectively does is it will, um, at the end of the year, uh, have, uh, everything totaled out. So we would see perhaps some positive budget variance that the council would have some, uh, decisions at that point in time about how you would manage it. But for the purpose of reporting and monitoring the, within the constraints of the guidance, um, we will be allocating these funds as it's directed. So that's the, that's the recommendation. I'm happy to answer any questions and, uh, uh, certainly entertain any, uh, other alternatives that council might have.
Thank you, Mr. Verbrugge. So to clarify, um, the, the issue of, uh, capital fund balances as opposed to capital projects, the ARP funds are not allowed to replenish capital fund balances. Is that correct?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, that is correct. Uh, they, the, the federal government wants these funds going out the door into the community. They want it to be, um, assisting, uh, the private sector in, uh, getting moving again. And so the fact is that we will allocate these dollars towards specific projects, capital projects, uh, and utilize them in that way. They, they will not go just to sit into a capital working, uh, balance fund.
Thank you. Counsel, questions? Councilmember Loman?
Well, I see the fire chief here. Why don't we go to that question? Uh, because the question I do have is, um, and then also, I mean, this is another question that, uh, that, uh, Councilmember Blago was not here, had a question about. But my question in terms of when we look at the component of the volunteer, uh, uh, portion of our fire department, um, I know we're making these changes with the battalion pieces and we're making these other, other changes. Are we at a point where we need to start, you know, seriously looking at a, at, you know, what it would cost for us to, to try to move the majority of our, uh, fire department, uh, to a more of a full-time model? I mean, how far away are we from that? And, uh, you know, what, what's the, uh, you know, what's the impact to our, to our overall budget?
Do you want me to take that, boss? Or you don't want to start first?
Mr. Verbrugge?
Uh, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, uh, I will, uh, preface the chief's comments by saying we are looking at that issue. Uh, and so, you know, we've started our, our budget preparations, uh, for the twenty twenty-two, um, budget year. And, uh, you know, we've asked departments to prepare their budgets, um, based on the, uh, conceptual budget that was adopted in December, uh, which is a hold the line budget essentially, but we also recognize that some conditions have changed. And I would say that one of those areas, um, where we're seeing a demand, um, based on conditions changing is in our fire department. So, uh, we are, uh, looking at, uh, what we may need to do to address that issue. One of them, uh, the council's aware of is the, uh, grant that has been made to the federal government, the grant request or application for safer funds, which would provide, uh, about two point four million dollars of, uh, uh, funds to the city of Bloomington to pay for eighteen firefighters. Actually, let me, let me reverse it. It would pay one hundred percent for eighteen new firefighters for a three-year period that would then at the end of the three-year period become the obligation of the local unit of government to fund, uh, entirely. And that amount is about two point four million dollars in that year that, if we're awarded that grant, we would become responsible for. That action would be the start of a change in the structure of our fire department where we would move from being a paid-on-call department to being a hybrid full-time and, um, paid-on-call department. So having provided that, chief, you want to answer the rest of it?
Okay. Couple of things, um, and if you need to get out the shepherd's hook at some point, feel free. It's been a long time since we've been a volunteer fire department. All right? Paid-on-call or part-time is probably more appropriate.
Well, and I asked a question about the.
It was a, it wa- it was a, uh, it was a, uh, a term that was very near and dear to, um, a previous mayor's heart. Mayor Bussie, um, did his best to, uh, um, straighten that out in one of his mayor's minutes and I truly appreciate that. I will say that, um, this staffing issue and this response issue has been going on for some time. I have been tracking this since two thousand and seven, which was actually one of our previous downturns where we had a significant, um, pause in putting on new, um, new people. After that, um, downturn in two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight, uh, when we did start putting people back on, and I think it wasn't until two thousand and twelve or thirteen, um, the interest, um, the world had passed us by. Um, people were no longer seeking to do that in their spare time for a number of reasons. That doesn't mean we don't get any interest. We do. But, um, as example, we, we, um, go through quite a, uh, a, uh, application process and then, um, when we eventually, um, get through that application process where we actually put people on, um, I, I tracked a period of time from two thousand and fourteen to two thousand, um, nineteen, we had, uh, fifty-six, um, people come onto the department. Nineteen of those, um, resigned for one reason or another, three more were terminated. So you can see we lost a little more than a third of the people we put on due to, in most cases, circumstances beyond their control. So the sustainability of the model is really in question. And that's partly the reason that we went ahead and, and. And that's partly the reason that we went ahead and, and made a safer grant request. We are what I would call a combination department now. We have eight career people on the department, four chief officers, and four firefighter, fire inspectors. This would expand that obviously considerably by adding 18 career firefighters. But to give you a sense of, of, of the kinds of things that we're talking about, at the, the manager alluded to, is the numbers of times that our trucks are rolling what we call light. In other words, with one or two people has really increased. We're at about 576 times this year so far where trucks have rolled with one or two. And in all cases, we've got chief officers that are rolling at the same time as those trucks and filling in on those crews. They're either getting on the crew, with the crew for a fire or an emergency car extrication, whatever the emergency call was, they're filling in on that crew. So three of my command staff, not including myself, have gone on over 1,100 calls, 1,100 times where they've rolled on calls so far this year. So, so when I look at all these things, that's where I felt it was important to make more of a case for the fire department's needs, and went and made the request for the ARP funding specifically to relieve some stress on the command staff, knowing that we are waiting at this point in time to hear more about the safer grant, which will help us on the, the core issue here, which is we're, we're riding short on trucks as well.
And if I can just add, Mayor and council members, the chief didn't characterize his optimism on receiving the grant, but I think that we're very realistic about the likelihood of actually receiving the grant is probably not good. And the reason is what the federal government did in the release of these safer grant opportunities this go-around was the 100% funding for three years. And they also loosened, you know, some of the criteria for who's eligible for them. And so we expect every department and their brother to be putting in money for these grants. And so I think it's going to be highly competitive, and I don't want to set an expectation that we're going to...
There's, there's about a dozen just in the metro area in this state that I know of that have put in. So, so manager's point is spot on. There's going to be a lot of competition, and we understand that. And our chances of being awarded, I, I just don't think are very good.
But that also means that we're going to have to continue to figure out, to Councilmember Lohman's question, what is that likely timeframe for transition to what we think is ultimately an inevitable model for staffing?
Right, right now, the department's staffing is 104, not including the four chief officers. And my sweet spot is 155. And I just, I can't keep up with attrition with even hiring. And then we'd get those years where budget restrictions fall into place and, and we end up not hiring, because despite, you know, the fact that these are part-time or paid-on-call people, there's still quite a cost associated with hiring and training them and equipping them and, and putting them in, putting them in, putting them on trucks, so.
So what I'm hearing then is, you know, if 155 is the, is the optimum amount, and we talked about the 18, and that's the reason, one of the, part of the reason why I said that, that component of the volunteer piece, because I think that's right now how we're kind of sustaining things.
So, so...
Or paid-on-call, if you may say that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll certainly say that, but you've got some, you've got some volunteer folks that are in there. But, so I guess, I'm going to ask...
You know, everybody is either paid-on-call or part-time. And the reason is, is because they're actually paid an hourly wage. So I, I don't want to perpetuate the fact that, you know, some people think they're volunteer or call themselves volunteers when they're not volunteers.
Absolutely. So, we go back to my question. And I haven't heard an answer to my question, I'm going to keep pressing because I think it's important from a, from a taxpayer perspective, if 155 is the number, we're looking at 18, we missed the, we missed the grant, and then, you know, so what's the, what's the cost to do in this if, if we don't get that grant?
So 155 is the sweet spot for paid-on-call. The sweet spot for a full-career operation would be less, and the sweet spot for a combination system, which is what we continue to work towards or work with, because it's what we have right now, is not clear right now on what we could afford to hire and what we could continue to add for, with our part-time people. We made just recently a hiring process where we've made job offers to 20 people, and we've lost four, and we're not through our background checks yet.
Maybe, Mayor and council members, Councilmember Lohman, chief, why don't you just sort of lay out how the 18 full-timers would be deployed as an example of what that combination might look like? So, you know, if there's a starting point to the transition, this might be how it's done irrespective of the funding source, whether it's the grant or locally supported?
So one of the things we measure is, is response. And one of the things that's very important, at least, you know, in most emergencies, in all emergency fronts, whether you're talking police, fire, EMS, is response time. And if you remember from the study, the station locations were based upon a four-minute response time and the ability to get trucks or responders to all areas of the city within, in a, within a response time. So we're, we're, we're looking at that very closely. And one of the things that has really helped us, especially during the daytime hours, is what we call duty crews, where we have actually people, firefighters in the stations, in four of our stations, getting trucks out the door within 90 seconds for, for response. One of the things that we've seen is, is that our call volume is highest between 7:00 in the morning and 10:00 or 11:00 at night. And we've been looking at expanding our duty crew hours, but we have a hard time with staffing that. So if we were to get those 18 career fire positions, we'd be looking at staffing some trucks 24 hours a day, seven days a week, to maintain some response capability no matter what. We've also been looking at other ways to add to our part-time paid-on-call force by changing our boundaries and, and looking for people farther away. Well, the problem is, was when you look for people farther away, it takes them even longer to get to the station, and our response time even gets slower. So a combination of career people staffing stations and increasing the number of duty crew hours up to eventually 24/7. So some rigs staffed with careers, some, or some, some parts of rigs staffed with career as well as part-time or paid-on-call firefighters that are working duty crews. And that is actually a model that is being done in other cities around us, as well as some cities just transferring completely to a career model. So it really ends up being kind of a local preference on, on which way you want to go. So, because it's been done both ways. Clearly, our vision right now is to start off by adding career so we can increase our 24/7 coverage and increasing our draw area to get more part-time people and, in some way, shape, or form, implement a greater duty crew coverage. Because our greatest problem here right now is, is we're not getting enough people to the stations quick enough to get the trucks out in time, and we're not meeting our response time, our response time goals. Which, after the study was done, I think was one of the marching orders I got from council was to come back with some response time goals and metrics that the departments to meet, and we're actually doing worse than, than, than we had the study. Of course, we've gone through some significant changes in society, and I want to make sure that I point that out to people, that when we had the study done, it was 2019. And a lot has happened since 2019, and a lot has changed in the world since 2019. So we're just working to keep up.
So the number I'm hearing is 2.4 for three years for 18 firefighters? I'm just not getting a number.
No, yeah, so, Mr. Mayor, council members, Councilmember Lohman, sorry if I'm not being clear. 18 full-time firefighters, a one-year cost for that is 2.4 million dollars is what we assumed for the purpose of that grant when we have to inherit the full freight, and that would be in 2025. If we, if we were to move sooner than that, it would be less because that's a forward projection that includes, you know, wage inflation along with it. But that's, if, if we're going to move to a combination model of part-time or paid-on-call firefighters with full-time firefighters, besides just the command and the four firefighter, fire inspectors, that's about the cost. It's going to be more than $2 million.
Okay, and it's just good to know, and I think, I think as we're looking at our, at our budget, we need to keep that in mind as, as we're, as we're rolling along, so.
Agreed. And, and a good discussion, and I think it's probably one that we need to continue, just to try and get us back on track for what we're looking at tonight, this need for the three battalion chiefs for fiscal years '22, '23, and '24, I think is what we're thinking about here for, with that 1.2 million dollar allocation. So, but absolutely, this is, this is a discussion that needs to happen, and is currently happening at the staff level. We need to make sure it, it works its way into the policy level and start working it toward the, the public level as well, because it's a, it's an important topic that we have to cover, so. Additional questions on the, on this, these proposed allocations of ARP? Councilmember Coulter, and then Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick ones, just to, to clarify, the government facilities, the government facilities fund, excuse me, that, that funding primarily comes through bonding, am I correct in understanding that?
Uh, council, excuse me, Mr. Mayor and council members, Councilmember Coulter, not necessarily. So we have a number of facility maintenance projects that we perform each year utilizing the fund that we have in place. So the facilities fund is primarily funded by charges to other departments. So, you know, there's what we call space and occupancy, right? So each of the departments pay a certain amount of money that goes into the facilities fund that pays for operating expenses like utilities and, and maintenance or, you know, cleaning and those types of things. But it also is calculating need for the whole facilities fund as well. And so that fund pays for projects mainly on a cash basis. So as you look at the CIP next week, or if you go back and review your document, if you're having trouble sleeping tonight, you, you won't see a whole lot of bonding dollars that are going towards facilities. There are outliers, and those outliers tend to be the really expensive projects. So the mechanics, maintenance, garage project that's coming up in a couple of years is upwards of $20 million. We don't have a fund that can sustain that as a cash outlay. That's, that has to be a debt issue. But for the most part, the projects in there are funded out of the facilities fund.
Okay, thank you. That's, that's helpful and all, that's a, that's a good clarification there. And then resident arts organizations, just so I'm, I'm clear, that refers to the, the arts organizations that are currently housed out of this complex, the, the Metalist Band, Bloomington Symphony, Angelica, and so on. This would not be, we, I mean, there, there's been discussion with the art supports grants of sort of broadening who might receive those grants, and I just want to make sure I understand that this, at least in, you know, understanding this is all fairly conceptual still, that that's the idea, that these go to support those, those sort of anchor organizations, for lack of a better term?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, council members, Councilmember Coulter, that's correct. And so I think you're referring to the allocation listing that's in your packet. And I'm, I'm not even touching on those items tonight because I think it's probably confusing to talk about them when we're talking about that 650,000 and how that plays out. I think at some point later this year, as we get a sense of where we're likely to be for our budget going into '22, we will see if these are areas that the council wants to explore. There will probably be other needs as well. But the idea with the resident arts organizations, you're correct, it's the ones that are considered our tenants here, the seven different organizations, is something akin to what we did with our small business emergency assistance loans, is if there's, if there is a possibility of extending some emergency financial assistance, directing funds towards the community utilizing the ARP dollars, some of them may or may not be eligible, and because there was a question about eligibility, we left them out of the recommendations. But there are other avenues for us to still provide that kind of assistance if council's interested in doing that. That would just be a subsequent conversation, not necessarily related to the ARP.
Okay, thank you. And I, I have other thoughts on that, that particular discussion, but that's probably best left for, for another evening.
Agreed.
And then, I mean, as far, are we, in terms of the structure of this discussion tonight, are we focusing solely on questions now and coming back to comments, or?
No.
Okay.
I think, I think if you have questions, comments, go for it.
Okay. I guess, you know, the only other things I would add, I, I, I would say as a basic framework, I think this is something that I, I could support. I think in particular, the significant investment in infrastructure, in particular water infrastructure, this is something I have been particularly concerned about for a number of years, recognizing as, as the city manager laid out, the sort of rock and a hard place we find ourselves with water rates and, and the need for infrastructure. And, you know, to be frank, just the, the reality of what we've seen when, when cities don't adequately maintain water infrastructure and how critically important that is. So I think that's, that's really important. You know, I, I have said before, I'm a little, generally a little wary of investing one-time money in things that have tails, but I, you know, I think the battalion fire chief said that, again, that, that is, you know, to the point where we, we can't afford not to do something, is what I would say. And then I, I think the investments in community development and public health, you know, I, I think those are particularly important just given the reason for this funding in the first place and, and the reality of what has happened to our community and, and our city operations as a result of, of the pandemic. So, you know, I, I think on the whole, these are all worthwhile investments, things that I, I can, can go along with. I, you know, I might have quibbles about individual line items, but I, I think these are all, you know, as a sort of a, a concept, I think this is very much the direction I'd like to see us go.
Councilmember Martin?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. A couple of quick questions. I guess I'll, I'll start with kind of the general, and then I've got one more for Chief Seal, if you don't mind. With the Neighborhood Development Center and Homeless Response and Prevention, I was really excited to see those included. Are we anticipating that, how much of this funding is going to be dedicated to developing new capacity within staff to be able to stand up these programs, get the word out there, operate them? Are we anticipating we're going to need to bring new people on to do that, or are we going to be able to carve out enough bandwidth from existing staff? How does that look?
Mr. Mayor and council members, Councilmember Martin, that is an outstanding question. And it goes back to some of the earlier questions about ongoing commitments and entails to our decisions here. The, the funds that are identified here are, are primarily associated with specific project funds that aren't supporting staff per se. Having said that, you know, we've had a fair amount of both transition and just sort of environmental shift here in the last couple of years. And so our Community Development Department is going to be looking at the structure of our various divisions there, and capacity is a significant part of that consideration, especially within the Housing and Redevelopment Authority. And then also how the work of the HRA, not just on the side of the operation that manages and administers housing and, and housing finance programs, but also the, the part of the HRA that is responsible for the redevelopment activity around the city, how, how that capacity intersects with the capacity of our Port Authority staff and with our planning staff, and whether we have the right tools in place to do that work. So whether having an economic development authority is something that we may also want to look at. Excuse me. That... I'm coughing on you. That, that analysis is going to be done soon. I don't have a start date for it, but we want to get it done soon. I mean, we have a new HRA administrator, new community development director, it's very high on our priority list. I can't answer the question today about how it necessarily fits specifically within these recommendations, except to say that the capacity necessary to do... these recommendations, except to say that the capacity necessary to do this work is part of that evaluation. Having said that, we do have staff in place who I think can start these programs and administer them well, and they're primarily staff that were working on similar programs during the pandemic. You'll recall, as I mentioned, the Small Business Emergency Assistance Loan, and that was utilizing people from our special projects and from our Port Authority and also our Community Outreach and Engagement Division, all working together. So I think that we do have the pieces in place to start this work. And then as we do that evaluation of our various divisions, that we'll learn more about what that capacity need is going to be.
Gotcha. Thank you. And and other ones, real quick. So I know when we were discussing additional resources and capacity for, say, dispatch over in BPD, it was mentioned that just the job market right now, even if these funds are allocated, it's going to be tough to maybe nail some new folks down. Are we anticipating that's going to be a similar situation with our battalion chiefs? How competitive is that landscape right now?
I have not completely worked out all those details on whether or not we will try to just do an internal promotional process or if we will seek seek outside. Some of that will have to do with what kind of candidate pool we think we'll be able to get internally.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. So I just have a couple of questions related to the public health initiatives. And so specifically around the contract with Alina and the mobile clinic, it seems like, so I guess my question is, are these primarily for kind of staff capacity, like startup costs? Because it seems like whenever I look at these, whether it's the community paramedics or the CHWs or, you know, childhood immunizations, that these are reimbursable through either public or private insurance or, and even like with WIC and other programs, it kind of the direction that the federal government is going on value-based care and like being more flexible in partnering with community organizations and reimbursements. I'm I'm just wondering if these will eventually get to a point where they're very, very minimal cost to the city and are we're getting more reimbursements from other entities?
Mr. Verbrugge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Councilmember Carter, those are very good questions and very well informed. And the recommendations made by our public health team have specifically considered the fact that there is other funding available to support this work. So the recommendations that are here, I would put in the category of largely startup cost. So the I think the breakdown for each of these items is about $200,000 for the the community paramedic model and the community health worker, 150 for the data consultant, the data infrastructure consultant, then about 150 for the mobile clinic. So the mobile clinic is acquisition of a van primarily and then equipping that van once you've acquired it because you gotta, you know, make some modifications to it. I think a good example of this to get your head around what it looks like, if you've seen the food delivery van for Veep that goes out and and delivers food directly to neighborhoods, is a good representation of what this type of project might look like. And if it's not that type of sprinter van, it may be a trailer that we equip that we can pull, something along those lines. So the the cost that's associated here really is one-time cost. The the community paramedic model and the community health worker, these types of services, this approach is trying to identify frequent callers for service and having services available to those people to provide essentially health management to minimize the number of necessary 911 calls and make sure that they're getting directed to services in an alternative way. A lot of these services that are provided are reimbursable through insurance. And so the idea is, after a couple of years of having this up and running, that we're able to assess how much we are able to recapture through insurance billing and then make a decision at that point in time if it's going to be something that we would continue doing because we have a reliable revenue source to do it.
Great, thank you. I I'll add that I'm also supportive of the proposal that's outlined for how to use the funds. It seems to me that it really aligns with the intent for the funding and then is meeting needs that we have as a community, so.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I'd also like to thank the city manager for the efforts in here. I know when we were looking at getting this money, I sent a short email with some of my priorities on this. I think it included 37 items that often conflicted with each other, and so somehow he did a nice job with this. But what I see here is a list of priorities that are focused on basic core services that a city should be providing, that I think there's going to be widespread support that that's what we should be doing with fire services, with park and public works and the water and stuff like that, and then targeting, helping, and assisting those most impacted, whether it be the homeless community or business community, the hospitality with what we already approved there. With that said, just one quick question. We have the program for the down payment housing assistance program, which is something I absolutely support of looking at how we can help people own homes. But I think the flip side of that is being mindful of a potential foreclosure situation as that moratorium goes away. And so I'm just wondering if we're planning wise and sound foolish, trying to help people buy homes while other people are, you know, potentially in a situation being foreclosed on, and if we might be at least being flexible enough if that situation arises to utilize the funding to support those people that maybe need a little bit of a bridge to get through the economic challenges that they found and be able to stay and keep in their house. I just saw an article today, and I apologize if I forgot where I read it, but it was talking about a potential foreclosure crisis once moratoriums are lifted, given the number of ordinances and things like that. This is something we've talked about before. It was the only thing on the list that jumped out to me that I just wanted to ask about.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Councilmember Nelson, you're right that we are focused and have been considered of the potential for a foreclosure crisis. You know, right now, we're not seeing a sign that there is going to be a significant wave of foreclosures, but that comes with a pretty significant caveat that foreclosures are a lagging indicator of economic stress. And the process for a a homeowner to work through the foreclosure process itself is anywhere from nine to 18 months. It can be a lengthy period of time. The fact that you don't see funding in these recommendations, I think, is indicative of our confidence level that the resources that we have currently through our HRA programs are sufficient to provide foreclosure prevention counseling and connection to resources that are sufficient to handle what we think the scale of the problem may be and that we're partnering with the Minnesota Home Ownership Center to make sure that those resources are available.
Thank you, Mayor and city manager. I appreciate that response.
Thank you, councilmember. So I will admit, and Mr. Verbrugge will attest to this, when I first looked at this list, he will tell you the first the first thing that I said was that, as I looked at the the numbers for the water utility and the government capital projects and the the fiber, I pointed out that never in my career have I seen anyone come to a ribbon cutting for a new roof. It just doesn't happen. And I was concerned that so much was internal that there wasn't enough to important projects, things that need to be done, that fiber optic, we've been talking about that as long as I've been on the council, and we need to get that done. But I was concerned that there wasn't enough in terms of the just the the general public benefit. Public is going to benefit from all this, but the, you know, the hands-on tangible kind of stuff. So I'm very glad to see things like the trail projects, the natural resources management, the, you know, the battalion fire chiefs, obviously, that's got a hands-on kind of thing for for many, many people. The public health workers, the 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 down payment assistance program, so many of these things, it's not just, it's a nice combination, I think, of the of the the bread and butter stuff that needs to get done. We need new roof. We need the we need the fiber optic, but we also need to do some of these things that that people can actually see the benefit from on their day-to-day, you know, in their day-to-day lives as they as they come through. And so I'd applaud staff for the work that has gone into this to to try and find that balance. Obviously, the numbers aren't going to balance just because it's a, you know, a roof in some of these underground projects are more expensive than than some of the other things we're talking about. But the 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 attempt and and the goal to balance some of these things and to look at both sides of this, the the bread and butter kind of stuff for what we need to do as a civic government, but also what we need to do for the the people of Bloomington, for the residents of Bloomington and the things that actually benefit them tangibly and and on their day-to-day in their day-to-day life. So well done, well done on that. And I think it's it's a good balance between the two. Mr. Verbrugge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Certainly welcome any additional comments or questions folks have, but I I sense we're sort of winding down here, so I want to talk about next steps, right? So what happens if council is generally comfortable with this outline? And I'm happy to take a question, councilmember Loman.
Just a real quick one, and maybe you're going to talk about this, but I just wanted to ask, so if if funds aren't expended in each one of these areas, is there the ability to, so for example, move that money to, you know, help out the, you know, with these fire folks in terms of that? Is there the ability to to move that around at all?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, councilmember Loman, the answer is absolutely yes. So as long as the funds are being committed to an eligible expense within the Treasury guidance, you have all the discretion in the world to move these items around, right? And it may get to a point with some of these things that what we thought we were going to do, we end up not doing, those funds may be available to allocate somewhere else. So I think what what we'd like to do on a next step basis is we'll take this back now. And so for like these capital projects, we will plug them into our CIP development process and identify the projects where we would be allocating these funds. And then we'll also develop a timetable for some of these other things. Not all of these things are going to move right away. Like I said, the natural resource management piece, the the trail or sidewalk improvement piece doesn't have to happen right away. We have time to make those decisions. There are some other things in here that I think we'd like to move quickly on, consideration of the fire staffing, the public health initiatives. So we will put a timeline on these and then bring them back to council. I don't know that we necessarily have to ratify by resolution how we're going to do this, other than getting more feedback from council that this is generally consistent with what you've discussed and understood this to be, because we also just have to make sure that we're following the guidance for utilizing the 5.7 this year and then the 5.7 after there. I don't think the timing on the funds is going to be a problem for us. I think it's just making sure that we get this plugged in and and that we can meet your expectations.
Everybody comfortable with that definition of next steps? Everybody good? John, you okay? Sounds good. All right, so if we don't need a formal resolution on this, this is this was for discussion only, and we can move on?
Thank you. Appreciate the questions and and the direction.
And thank you. Thanks for pulling this together and framing it up in such a way. Move on to item 8.2, which is our 2022 legislative requests, and kind of ties with this in a lot of different ways, but why don't we get that discussion underway as well?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. You're correct, this also ties in. This is the meeting of many moving parts. So for the last couple of years, the city council's actually been talking about how do we how do we fund significant projects that we're looking at? This goes all the way back to early 2016, when the city council was doing its strategic planning. And we knew that we had demands through our capital improvement plan that were going to involve some pretty significant funding decisions. And we were also looking at demands from the community for improvement to various facilities and amenities. And frankly, there were more demands than there was funding available to do it. And I will admit to you, I don't think that we've progressed very far from those discussions in 2016 because, you know, cracking that nut of how are we going to pay for this and how are we going to ask the community to make pretty significant commitments and, you know, be willing to take on financial cost to do these things has been a hard nut to crack. So one of the things that we identified in this process is the need to attract additional revenue sources. And in the last couple of years, we've seen at the legislature that some of these additional revenue sources have been provided by the state of Minnesota to various communities. So let me actually, I forgot that I have a presentation to go along with this, so Chris will make me the presenter. And I think that I can do this relatively seamlessly. I am going to share my PowerPoint for you. So far, so good, right? So I just go up here. There we go. Everybody's seeing that okay, right? All right. So again, talking about the capital improvement plan items, one of the things when when we're talking about potentially getting assistance from the state in one form or another, usually that comes in the form of capital bonding as part of the state bonding bill. They have a requirement that projects have to be regional in nature. So this is, I don't think it's a challenge, but it's been a delimeter in terms of the types of projects that we can put forward. And then in addition to capital projects that we've thought about for the legislative process, we also have other projects that aren't necessarily requiring funding, but they do require other permissions or changes in law. So housing or redevelopment projects, case in point, this year, we received permission for two new TIF districts that required special language, special legislation to have those TIF districts move forward. So we often go to the legislature when we're looking for assistance in a number of different places. With the with the capital improvement plan background, for folks who are watching who aren't familiar with this conversation, capital improvement plan is a planning document that we have that looks out 10 years, and it has every major significant capital cost item in there. To get into the CIP, it has to be greater than $50,000, okay? And we program all of those across the entire enterprise. So that that captures our our government buildings, its reinvestment into our park system, the trails, and then also things that people think less about but are pretty traditional, infrastructure of the community, the pipes that are underground, the bridges that go over the streets, you know, the utilities, everything else. So all of those are in the CIP. You know, back when we first were looking at the CIP with some of these council members and the city manager, I think that our 10-year CIP clocked in at over a billion dollars. It's a lot of money, okay? And so trying to figure out how do we come up with the funds to meet all of those needs has been challenging. Now, the CIP is funded from numerous sources. We do get a fair amount of outside funds that come through for transportation projects, right, through MINDOT or the federal government. We have the pavement management program that is funding a lot of our street or pavement man or street improvements. So the utility funding contributes to that. We utilize property taxes for a fair amount of these things, and then and then we have other sources as well. So and if folks are wondering, well, when do you talk about these items? Well, we're going to talk about it again next Monday. So tonight is just sort of the tip of the iceberg on the CIP discussion, okay? So just for the benefit of folks who are watching, we went to the legislature back in 2020 with capital bonding request with one project. That project was to make improvements to our Center for the Arts that's attached here to Civic Plaza. We we had some needs for additional space just for storage, but in in considering that project, we also knew we were running out of both rehearsal and performance space for our resident arts organizations. And so put together a plan that would actually have an expansion of our Center of the Arts to add a concert hall. That project was actually approved for MMB to move forward, that's Minnesota Management and Budget, that's the governor and administration's review process. And then we were working with our legislators to have it included in the 2020 capital bonding bill in both the House and Senate. And then the pandemic hit, and we withdrew that request because with all of the uncertainty And then the pandemic hit, and we withdrew that request because with all of the uncertainty and the, you know, the impending financial issues that we were facing, it did not seem proper to continue forward with the request to do that. So that that project, we've put on the shelf for the time being. The 2022 capital bonding requests that the council has already submitted are for the Bloomington Ice Garden and for replacement of Bloomington Public Health. So as we've had this discussion over a couple of years, like I said, we've identified that a funding source that we have not had available in Bloomington that has been made available to other communities is what's called local option sales tax. Other than the cities of Minneapolis and St. Paul, metro area cities have largely been shut out of this funding option by the legislature historically. For many years, it was approved for what I would call regional centers in outstate Minnesota. So the St. Clouds, Rochester's, Duluth, Moorhead, Brainerd, Bimidji, those kinds of places have been approved for local option sales tax because they're often using them to fund regional projects like convention centers or, you know, things that draw a larger regional population together. But more and more, communities around greater Minnesota have been utilizing the local option sales tax for projects that are much more local. They still have some sort of regional benefit to them, but much more local in nature. And then within the last couple of years, we've seen that metro area communities have been able to successfully make the argument to the legislature that that these communities have similar funding challenges to outstate Minnesota communities and that they need to diversify their revenue sources. And so within the last two years, we've had at least five metro area cities that have received a local option sales tax. So what does a local option sales tax do? It allows the local community to capture sales tax revenue that's generated in that city. So it's collected at the local level and it's kept at the local level. Most of the cities in Minnesota have either like a quarter percent or a half percent local option sales tax, the ones that have been approved. Now, the legislature does require that any city that receives permission from the state still has to go through voter approval in their local community before they can turn on a local sales tax. And so there is a voter referendum after the legislative process that would need to be successful before this could be implemented. The legislature also requires that capital projects meet several tests. This regional benefit or regional significance that I've mentioned several times, and the way that it's defined in statute is that, you know, the the requesting community has to provide some data about the number of users or other benefit that this project has to people outside of the specific community. It needs to be a single building or structure, or can include the infrastructure that's necessary to provide access to that building or structure. It has to be improvements within a single park or a named recreation area, and it can be a contiguous trail. So what they're really trying to do, in the language that they have currently, is prevent cities from going with just a request for money to fund a bundle of activities. They want it specified to a specific project. And so this this language, especially those last three bullets there, was actually new language in 2021. Previously, the regional significance was the primary requirement in the language. And like I say, just this year, three cities in the metro area received it at Edina, Maple Grove, and Oakdale. And what this essentially has done is shifted the landscape for what revenue options are available to local communities. We, back in 2019, when this discussion first popped up with the council, asked the University of Minnesota Extension Service to perform an analysis of sales tax revenue generated in our community, and then an analysis of what that would result in based on a half percent sales tax. And so just within the last couple of months, we asked them to update that study. So they do this analysis for communities all over the state. This isn't something they have done uniquely for Bloomington. They look at the the sales tax that is generated. They have a methodology for isolating those numbers. And what they came back to us is they said, based on the revenues in 2019, it would have generated in Bloomington $10.6 million locally at a half percent. Okay, that's down a little bit from 20, the 2016 year when we first asked, two years ago, that was at about $11 million. But what they also said is forecasting forward, we expect that by 2022, it it will likely be up around 12 million. Okay, so the other really important finding in their analysis is that 75% of the sales tax that is paid in Bloomington is paid by nonresidents. Okay, so this gets at a really important point about one of the considerations for why communities pursue a local option sales tax, especially for projects that have regional benefit. And that is, people come to their community to use these facilities, and it is reasonable to assume that people who are using those facilities from outside of the community should be contributing to the costs of those facilities. Okay, the local option sales tax is a vehicle to provide for that very circumstance where nonresidents can be contributing to an asset within a community that is serving nonresidents in addition to serving its own residents. So we then asked our financial advisor, Baker Tilly, to take that $10.6 million and figure out how much we could do in terms of project cost utilizing that as a funding stream to support debt service over a course of 20 years, because that would be the standard issue for most of the projects we're looking at. And that number came out to be about $150 million of total projects that could be funded. So then we asked the question, well, how much would $150 million of projects cost our property taxpayers if we're doing that just as debt service and asking our property taxpayers to pay for it? And that would be about $210 a year for a median value home. When we run the sales tax impact on a household basis, that number drops to about $72 a year. So it's a third of the financial impact to households in Bloomington. And so I'm using different language here, and I'm acknowledging that, is that the property tax impact is shared by those who pay for property taxes in Bloomington. Now, that's everybody. It's just not explicit for all of the residents of Bloomington. So if you are a renter, your property tax share is loaded into your rent. And it's distributed differently, right? So if you, it's much like our our tax levy in general, we use the median value home because that's the best way for us to estimate impact. And then somebody, if they know how much their home costs, they can get a at least a gauge on what that's going to be for them. So it's hard for us to be precise on that $210 million a year. What we did on the sales tax impact is we actually spread that across the number of households, which is about 38,000. So we have many fewer property taxpayers than that, but the number of households in the community is about 38,000. And so that was the spread number for the sales tax revenue that was generated. And a reminder of that $10.6 million, only a quarter of that is paid by residents of Bloomington, according to the analysis. So what we did is we went and looked at the projects that we have been talking about for a number of years without identifying a funding source or having a mechanism to move them forward, and looked at the ones that would be eligible based on the current law, again, regional, single structure, or a single park. So Bloomington Ice Garden renovation is one that we already have a capital bonding request submitted. So if we were to include that on the list, we'd engage with our legislators and with our lobbyists and also talk about what the likelihood is of moving both paths at the same time, or if it's more appropriate to move one path versus another. And the same is true for our public health building replacement. The Creekside Building Replacement is another project that, especially in combination with public health, would be one that could easily meet the regional test, especially if we make it consistent with our tri-city public health consortium that's serving Richfield and Edina in addition to Bloomington. For the, you know, the costs associated with this, what we have done is essentially assumed what was the medium model for the community center discussion that occurred a couple of years ago. So it's that $60 million type range of project. Dwan Clubhouse Replacement and Course Improvements, that is a facility that is in really rough shape, needs to be replaced. Course improvements are being studied right now. The Bloomington Center for the Arts improvements and expansion, we could put back on the table. And then I included Highland here. We haven't discussed Highland much at a staff level, just because there's been so much in flux right now because of our relationship with Three Rivers as the operator and uncertainty about the future of the golf course itself. But I think it's a reasonable one to put into the mix. So these are all ones that would likely meet the tests that are in the current law. And then there are other projects that we may want to look at that don't currently meet the law, but we've seen that the law language has been changed, right? And so if, you know, if it's in the interest of the community and the desire of the council to do so, we could engage with our legislators and others to talk about whether there would be flexibility. So this idea that you have to have a single park or a single named recreation area, we know that our park system master plan has a schedule, especially for the park building replacements, right? So is there is there a willingness on the legislature to do something along those lines where they would give you permission to do a series of buildings? The Affordable Housing Trust Fund certainly doesn't meet the language as it is today, but in terms of money that would be going towards a capital investment, that that money is going to facilitate affordable housing projects. And it's going to end up being something that is made of bricks and mortar. And I think that there's an argument to be made, not only does it eventually meet the test of being a capital project, but it is also meeting a significant regional issue of the the demand on affordable housing. Okay, so this is just food for thought of the types of things that we could talk about if you pursue this. Okay, so this conversation today is, I would say, one for awareness raising for the community, to make sure that people know that we're considering alternative revenue options and how we might secure those from the legislature. And it's providing additional information from the council because the data that you're seeing today is more than we've had available for previous discussions, right? You're going to get more information, again, next Monday, the much hyped CIP discussion that we've mentioned several times now, because all of these pieces fit together, right? So what happens if you agree to pursue local option sales tax is that you essentially relieve local property taxpayers of up to $150 million of projects that need to get done from the local property tax rolls through debt service. Okay, so you can focus on other essential core services. We've talked about some of them, the the Public Works Maintenance Mechanic Garage, the four new fire stations that are in the pipeline. These are necessary replacement projects. They're expensive, right? And so the ability of our local property taxpayers to bear the burden of all of these projects is unrealistic unless we bring in other revenue sources. Okay, so the the conversation tonight is really intended to start asking or framing things up for the council to ask questions, but it's also to get direction from you. If you want us to proceed, our next step's work is that we would have to start developing some project scope for the various items that are in here. And that means a little bit better definition on anticipated costs. And like I said, what what is actually going to be included in these projects? That'll take us some time to do before we can come back and have a more in-depth conversation with the council about which projects you want to pursue in this manner, because then you'll have more information. We don't actually have to make a decision on whether to pursue this until January, when we would need to have a resolution from the council that we could bring forward to our legislators and start moving legislation to support the request. But until then, we have some work to do, and one of those things is creating an engagement plan. Councilmember Loman earlier identified the fact that we did really good work a few years ago, going out and raising awareness in the community about the condition of our facilities and why we are focused on this capital reinvestment necessity for our operations. And we had really good response to that, and it has receded from the public consciousness because we haven't talked about it in a couple of years, for the most part. So we need to get back out and start engaging the community again in helping them understand exactly what the justification is for all of these capital projects that we're doing. Many of these, I think the community is going to be inclined to support because they are directly supportive of essential services that the residents recognize are necessary. The fire station replacements, the work that our Public Works does, I I think that people can very easily make the connection on why that's necessary. Some of these other projects that some people might refer to as quality of life projects are important amenities in our community. They're important assets that we have that we need to take care of, that frankly are in need of significant attention. It doesn't make them any less essential, but I don't know that folks necessarily consider them essential. But because they're also facilities that draw people in from outside the community, it's reasonable to ask if we can have people from outside the community contribute towards their improvement. So I'm going to stop there. It's a lot of talking. Happy to answer questions.
Food for thought, council. And so what are your thoughts, questions on this? Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mayor. I can I can kick it off here with a few questions. Just in terms of sort of the logistics, it was, I mean, it was within the last few years that the order of of local option sales tax was reversed. It used to be that the referendum came first and then legislative approval. And I, this is a question I'm not expecting you to have an answer to right now, but, you know, granted a small sample size, but has that, have we noticed any sort of change to how successful these efforts have been in terms of getting voter approval in, you know, knowing that first they have to go to the legislature and then voters have to approve them rather than the other way around? Do we know if there's been any sort of change, generally speaking, even if it's just sort of anecdotal, this is what we see from other communities? And I, like I say, I know that's not a question you're going to be able to answer tonight, but it's a question that's on my mind.
Sure. Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember Coulter, it's a really good question. I don't have an answer immediately for you, but I do think by the end of this year, we'll at least have an idea of the, maybe a couple of the ones that were approved this year. The the problem with the batch that was approved this year is that it was the end of June, and so being able to schedule a referendum by November may be pretty tight for some of these communities. My guess is that most of them will be holding their ballot questions in 2022. But we may be able to see if a couple of them are teed up and ready to go, that they're able to move this year. We can also look at the ones that were approved last year, which was the first year when the new language was in place, and see if we have any indication of how that may have changed, whether those requests to the community were successful or not. We can do that research.
Yeah, thank you. That would be helpful. A few other quick questions. I feel like last time we talked about this, this question was answered, but I just want to confirm that we, you know, when it comes to a local option sales tax, we don't kind of get to pick and choose what it applies to, correct? That it just, whatever currently is taxed by sales tax in the state of Minnesota, that's what it applies to. And then, so if we hypothetically say we were to get approval for a local option sales tax next year, it's on the ballot and starts taking effect in, say, 2024. Taking effect in say twenty twenty-four. If say in twenty twenty-five, the legislature adds something else to what is taxable by sales tax. Then that gets added to our local option sales tax, correct? I know I phrased that question in a profoundly confusing way.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, councilmember Coulter, you are correct, uh and to maybe try to be a little more succinct. There is not a, an exemption or a special additional classification of taxable sales. Um just because we have a local option. And so people are saying, speak English. Um then, or plain language, right, let me say plain language. Um clothing and food are generally exempt from sales tax. Clothing and food will continue to be exempt from sales tax. That doesn't give us a, the option of changing that.
Yes, and, and, and to my latter point, I am old enough to remember when there was some discussion of, in a very limited way. Adding clothing to taxable sales. Um so should that change, that would apply to any hypothetical future local option sales tax as well.
That is correct.
Um and then the last question I have is also one I'm not expecting an answer to tonight, but um the, the percentage of um. I forget how it was phrased exactly, the, the seventy-five percent that would come from non-residents. Um do we, are we able to determine how that number compares to other communities? Um you know, like, I mean, Minneapolis and St. Paul are obviously pretty good examples, and I think you said Duluth has one too. Um it'd be interesting to see how that compares to other, other communities, both those and, you know, smaller, smaller, greater Minnesota communities as well.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, councilmember Coulter, another good question, and I think that is a unique circumstance to each of the cities. Uh it occurs to me the best way that we can start to answer that is by contacting the University of Minnesota Extension. And asking them if they have that breakdown for the cities that they have done studies for. I don't know that they have done studies for all of the cities that have received permission for a local option sales tax. In which case, um we'll have to do a little bit of extra work to um work through those um cities and see if they have that data themselves.
Thank you, yeah, I, like I say, I just, I think that would be really, really helpful information to have. And I, you know, I will just close out by saying, you know, I've been, I've been pretty clear that I think a local option sales tax just makes a lot of sense for the city of Bloomington, you know, I think. You know, in, even in term, not only in terms of the, the, you know, the facilities we have like the Ice Garden. Just, you know, the, the recognition that a lot of folks come to the city of Bloomington who don't live here and they, they use our facilities. They, they, they do things in, in the city of Bloomington and they're, you know, they can and should. Um but I, I think it is perfectly reasonable, given the, the unique position that Bloomington is in with some of the, the facilities and, and. Amenities, amenities, excuse me, that we have in, in this city. I think it is absolutely perfectly reasonable to, to ask folks who live outside the community to, to chip in and, and help foot the bill and, and you know, to my point earlier as well. Um you know, I'm, I'm always in favor of, of sort of broadening the base of revenue of, of finding other options available besides property taxes and, and that kind of thing. So um to me, this, this just makes a whole lot of sense for a lot of reasons.
Others? Councilmember Loman.
So uh generally this um, uh I mean, the, the seventy-five, twenty-five percent split um seems to be a good, good deal. You know, when you, when you look at this, I mean, I mean, when you look at sales tax, you know, obviously it, you know, it is more aggressive tax. And so um when, when you do do that, I mean, it does have some impact on uh those folks who are, uh you know, challenged socially, economically. And so uh the, 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 the point that I want to just kind of raise, or the concern that I have. Is, you know, we've got the levy out there, we've got this local sales option, uh and we would also, we just, we just talked about franchise fees just a minute ago. I mean, there's, you know, there's a fee for solid waste, I mean, there's just a fee after fee after fee. And so, you know, and, and I know that this year, we're, we're going into that, you know, that uh, you know, the residential side is going to be impacted uh more uh from that. And so um it can feel like uh for those folks who are, are getting these fees, I'm not saying necessarily we're gonna do this right now, it's gonna go into it, into account. But I just think about those years where that residential swing or, or for those businesses that are out there, we take that swing one way or the other. That impact um, you know, on the uh, uh, on the resident or the business. Um you know, that's something I think we need to think about, have an overall uh tax picture. And so that's the piece that I'm uh, I'm concerned about. And I'm not able to uh clearly understand what that looks like uh from those various vanish points. And I think that's important when we, when we uh continue to, to talk about equity and, and what the impact is for, for folks across our city. Because we just need to understand, you know, what this does, I mean, and certainly uh, you know, I think that what we, we provide as a service to ours, our, our residents. Is probably one of the best bangs for your buck that you can get out there, you know, across the metropolitan area. But we want to just make sure that we're not pricing folks, you know, out of the, out of the realm uh of, of existence. So that would be my only statement about that, it wouldn't be a reason to not do this, but I just, some of these other items of taxation, that's where I'm just concerned we may get too big. So that's it.
Councilmember Martin? And councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor, uh yeah, just, just real briefly, kind of where my um head is at. Something I've been chewing on quite a bit recently is the fact that the U.S. Census Bureau looks at our region as the Minneapolis, St. Paul, Bloomington metro area. Um but it, it seems like kind of a, a lot of our history, we've kind of thought of ourselves as a bedroom community. But economically and in terms of our regional draws, our regional presence, we haven't been for quite some time. Which is why I really appreciate the work that's uh gone into this, uh and I would encourage staff to, to be pretty bold in their thinking. Uh because I think this is a, a, this is a great financial step to recognize the heft that Bloomington brings to this region. And the number of people from across the region that enjoy our amenities here, so let's keep on chugging.
Councilmember Nelson?
Right, I've just got a few questions to start with. Um Highland Golf Course, the clubhouse was on this and um. Just wanted to try to understand the impact of the partnership with Three Rivers Park District, if that changes. Whether or not we could or should use lost for a project like that? If it would help with the request uh because there was another entity, clearly it's a regional entity that is managing it, uh would that, I mean. I don't know, we'd have a struggle with me, meaning the regional requirement, but clearly if it's a Three Rivers facility, it's within a regional system.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, councilmember Nelson, uh I think I generally understand the question and agree with its sentiment. And, and frankly, it was a relatively late addition to uh the discussion point here. Uh but the fact is, I didn't want to um unnecessarily rile uh folks in our community. By leaving what is a pretty obvious uh community amenity that has regional usership off of the list. Uh especially when we've had so much discussion around it uh in the last couple of years. Um so one of, you know, one of the uh things that we'll want to be uh thinking about here is just where we are. In that experience with Three Rivers as the operator. We're gonna learn more this year uh at the end of this year, uh and our staff is continuing to meet with the Three River staff. Uh to evaluate how that operation is going. Um but I also have to uh set a little bit of the expectation that we got a late start on this year. And uh Three Rivers was um very late putting some of their uh initiatives into place. So it isn't going to be the, the full benefit of a full season that we will uh have learned experience. Um that doesn't mean we shouldn't consider to think about it or continue to think about it. Um I just, I think it needs to be on the list as a possibility and we can sort that out at a later time.
Well, I'd certainly support the golf course in district two, so I don't know about that one or the other district. Um next thing you would ask about looking at other things, and one of the things that I always see is a, a huge regional asset. That we are close to having, we talked about it earlier, is our trail system. And um I think if we can make the right connections so that people could get north, south, east, west. We have some limited connections into the uh various other trail systems that take you um. Uh over to Shakopee or up into Edina and things like that, but um. I know that this is only for buildings and that would be one area that I would look at potentially improving the uh. Uh at the legislature is that we could use it for clearly regional trail systems and maybe take some of the pressure off of that. Previous conversation with the uh franchise fees or expand what we can do on the sidewalk program, whatever that is, so. Um I hope for the question there more of a comment on that.
If, if I may, just real quickly, a contiguous trail is a specifically allowable um purpose in the legislation. So if there is a uh trail and um, you know, again, not necessarily wanting to whack the hornet nest, but you know, I. I, I think it bears mentioning, the state has invested in a significant trail in the river valley. Um there's a significant portion of that planned trail that is not funded and, and does not have an identified funding source. Uh I, I can, advocates of that may uh may see this as a possibility. Um so you know, where we have links missing from regional trail systems, uh a contiguous trail project would be an eligible use.
In, in other places, fantastic.
And in other places, not just that one specifically.
Not just that one, okay, um and then in terms of buildings, um you know, would. You had talked about expanding to the park master plan and some of the buildings there. Would the idea for this be to focus on those that are of regional nature like Bush Lake, um beach, uh pavilion, um Normandale? And so I think, um I don't know if there are any improvements there coming up in the CIP, or would this be looking to expand the law? To allow for some of the other ones that are in, uh that we talked about just recently in the park master plan to build. Sort of a warming house slash meeting room type facilities.
Uh Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, councilmember Nelson, I think we just need to flesh that out a little bit more. And we'll probably want to wait until the end of August when we have an adopted park system master plan or anticipating adoption of that plan. Uh but to answer your question, at least for the time being, the easiest um facilities in our park system. To make that regional uh use uh argument, I think are the larger athletic facilities like uh Dred Scott and uh Valley View. Uh but also Bush Lake Beach would certainly be one um that uh we can clearly identify. That people are coming from outside the community to use uh, use those facilities.
Okay, um just a quick segue on that, would that include some of the improvements that we've talked about with the pool? I think there was something went down the pipe there, would that be a regional asset as well?
Uh Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, councilmember Nelson, I believe that uh, that we could look at the pool as uh one of those eligible uses. I think that it would be easy to document that there are people from outside the community that are using that amenity.
Um yeah, I think in the research that we did uh for the community center, we saw quite widespread use from within and outside of the community. Particularly with a lot of the swimming boots that come in here. Um I, the last thing that I wanted to say is, in my mind, and I think councilmember Coulter was kind of talking about this a little bit in terms of the shift. Their property values to residential and things like that. Um I see this as a tool of economic development to maintain the property values in our commercial base. I think that things we're doing within the parks, within like Big, within the golf courses, all these things bring people in. Uh if we were able to make improvements and continue to maintain our major athletic field, and we just had fireman's tournament at uh. You know, at Valley View there and brought in a lot of people in their community, and those people went out to eat, they went over to Shanty Town and Sports Page and. Even in those dinner in Hazelwood and, and all that stuff, and they're spending money in our community, they're, they're, they're supporting our local businesses. And um I've always been a huge advocate of connecting these items. And I see this as a really powerful tool to do that. Um and really help uh the businesses and the values, our property tax based values and, um you know. We had the report uh earlier this year on the, you know, I think it was twelve, thirteen, fourteen million some dollars, something like that with the art center alone. As it's currently configured within our community, how much it drives in terms of economic benefits for our community and. Uh we own the value of Big as a regional asset, so um. Uh I, I, I think it's a really good direction to go and really connect those things for people and get Bloomington these really uh premier facilities.
Thank you, councilmember, councilmember Carter.
Thank you, Mayor, uh so I'll be brief and just say that I agree with a lot of what's been said. I think there's a really compelling argument for why we would want to move forward in this direction. Um I do appreciate the concerns that you brought up, councilmember Loman, um and for me, I guess at the end of the day, residents get to vote. They get to vote on it, so um so I'm comfortable moving forward and I actually, it's really um, you know, as we think about wanting to attract more families. Wanting to attract businesses, wanting to attract um visitors to our community, these are the things that bring people here. And so um we know with the age of our community, um you know, Jamie laid out um the diary that a lot of our infrastructure is in. I mean, we have to make these investments, we have to. Um and so either the property taxpayers bear more of the brunt or we can find other revenue options. And so, again, I'm supportive of moving forward.
And Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, one thing I should reiterate, I didn't make it part of my presentation, but it is important. Is that the legislation uh or the, the state law only allows five capital projects to be funded. So that's what makes this conversation difficult uh is uh with that um, that five project limitation. Uh picking which projects we, we might advance for consideration, the hundred and fifty million dollar is the second limitation. Um but I, I think it's uh, it's probably gonna be pretty clear on a, on three or four of those. And then figuring out what else might be included is probably where we'll spend some time trying to figure out what the council wants to do. So if I uh am hearing people.
Can I ask just a quick question if I could, please? Um uh I, first of all, I've been a huge advocate of local option sales tax, uh have seen it work so effectively in Rochester in particular. And in Rochester, they originally did it, I mean, to your point, and, and actually your point, Mr. Brugge. They originally did it for flood mitigation projects in the city because it was incredibly necessary. And they did the, the projects, they got done, and they brought it back to the community and said, okay, we did this, we're done with this, it's paid for. Would you like to continue this and continue doing these things? And Rochester has had a community, a local option sales tax for three or four decades now. And it continues to pay for impressive community improvements and, and it has for the longest time, so. My question to you, Mr. Brugge though, uh and you're gonna yell at me for being a glass half-full, half-full again uh guy. Uh so in Rochester, for example, if they have a hundred and fifty million dollars in projects and they've got that ten point five million dollars worth of local option sales tax that they're expecting. Uh what do they, what happens in the years when they don't make that? When, when there, there's, now Rochester is probably a bad example because the medical industry is pretty stable. But uh play this out in, for example, Duluth or, or another, in the Brainerd area, say Brainerd for example. If they can't meet their obligations through the local option sales tax, which means there's probably been a downward trend in the economy for some reason, people aren't visiting as much. How do they deal with that from a, uh, from a, a financial standpoint?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, I'm gonna ask our CFO, Lori Economy Scholler, to start making her way to the microphone. Uh and I will uh offer some ideas while she's doing so and then uh Lori can supplement what I have to say. Not all of these projects are going to be done in year one. Uh so when we start uh collecting the local sales tax, if we receive it, it will um start to accumulate within the fund that will service these projects. When we issue debt on a project, we have to issue debt at a hundred and five percent of the project cost to create a reserve. Um in the event that there is not sufficient funding for some reason or another. So I think between the combination of the couple of year delay in getting projects uh initiated, because we're not going to do all five at the same time. We could, you, you need to really increase staff to do that, it would be a significant burden. Um and, and the reserve that is required for our debt service, we probably have the adequate um security in place, but Lori, if you want to add on to that.
Mayor and council, when we did the initial study um two years ago and they looked at twenty sixteen sales tax numbers. That was at a peak and that would allowed uh the city to collect approximately eleven million. Um it's down several to twenty nineteen, um we're now at ten point six, so adjusted by four hundred thousand that year. Um when Baker Tilly did their bond run, it was at the ten point six. Um I know the future piece said we might get up to twelve million, which is a considerable number of sales tax items um in a short period of window. So being a conservative finance person, you budget your revenue at the lowest number. So if we're staying at um the ten point six and it fluctuates up, hopefully. So, if we're staying at the ten point six and it fluctuates up, hopefully we're collecting and building, so in those downturns, we have plenty to cover the debt service. And that would be the goal. If we don't have, then that's a tax levy.
So, it would be covered, any shortfall would be, have to be covered by a tax levy?
But we would hope that all the mitigating pieces of that...
Understood, okay.
So, a year from now, when we look at what 2020 did, hopefully that's our worst case.
I, I would hope, I would hope. So, thank you, appreciate it.
Yeah. Do you want me to stay for more questions?
I don't have any, any other questions from a finance standpoint?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So, you had your next slide, your next step slide up, and I can't recall exactly what it said, but I, I think I'm, I'm seeing agreement across the board here in terms of making our way toward the next steps, whatever that might be on this, because I think it's a, I think the agreement is that this would be a, it's a good way to diversify our, our revenue in the city, it would fund incredibly important projects in our city, and it would make it, make ours a better place to live and, and doing things that people want us to do, basically, which we have heard from many groups about many different things. And so, next steps?
Next steps, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, we will do a couple of things. One, we will start doing staff planning about building out project scope, so we can put better definition on anticipated project cost and, and, and what will be included with each of these different options. I don't know that we'll have it in time for next Monday's discussion, but we'll go into the CIP and start to identify funding source that segments some of these projects into the local option sales tax. And we want to do that just so you see the impact and so residents can see the impact of how it relieves property taxpayers of the, the cost associated with some of these major projects. And then what we will do is come back, I would imagine before the end of August, with a bit of a schedule about when you're going to start seeing more information about this, leading up to January when we would need to pass a resolution. But before then, we'll also have our meeting with our legislators as we put together our legislative platform for 2022. So, we'll also be talking to our legislators and talking to our lobbyists about what the strategy might be for working through the legislative request during the next session.
Any questions on next steps? I think forward, very good, thank you. Our last item on the agenda tonight is item eight point three, our city council policy and issue update. Mr. Verbrugge?
I have probably talked more tonight than I have in every meeting combined this year, so I don't have anything else to say, Mr. Mayor.
Very good. Council, anything to bring forward? Councilmember Lohman?
I think we talked about this earlier and I think manager, you had, had mentioned that this would probably be the more appropriate time to bring forward the, the golf piece. So, I just want to bring it forward, you know, I'm not necessarily looking to, to make an ask right now, but just want to put it out there to see if, to gauge any interest in terms of looking. I know we've got a lot of priorities, so I'm, I'm kind of looking more for next year, maybe. I never like to start stuff in the middle of the year, but I, I do think it is, it would be interesting to know what type of stuff has happened around those golf, around those golf areas in terms of Highland and Dewan. So, I'm not sure if there's any other interest here in terms of looking to see if there is any issue there at all, to see if we could pursue it next year, you know, maybe we don't move forward or maybe we do, I don't know.
I, I think it'd probably be worth a discussion. I think you're right, though, we've got to get the information first. If we're talking five broken windshields in a, in a season, I don't know that it's worth it to invest in whatever it would take to put a fence around there or enough fencing or enough netting around there to keep things out of people's yards and so on. But if it's ten times that, you know, then it's worth a discussion. And I, and I'm not exactly sure, I'd, I'd, I guess turn it over to our parking rec staff who's probably, you know, they've been around the block on this type of thing at least once or twice and probably have a better idea of how to collect that information and make sure that it's legitimate information and, and how, you know, if, if it's doable. So, I, I think it's probably worth it to ask them to take that on. I, I mean, I will say, I mean, for as bad of a golfer as I am and, and the courses that I've played, I mean, I think a Brookview in, in Golden Valley, I mean, the biggest net that I've seen on a golf course is trying to keep the balls off of three ninety-four and they don't always work. I've seen plenty of balls on three ninety-four. And at, at the same time, you know, I've hit plenty of balls on that course into the Carroll eleven parking lot because there isn't a net there. So, it's, you know, it's, 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 I think, how bad the, how, how often it would happen, how bad the outcome would be and what the cost would be to do all of that, I think. And, and it's worth looking into, I think, it doesn't hurt.
Yeah, you know, and I, I guess I'll, I'll, I'll be honest, you know, Mayor, I live very close to Dewan and we get a, you know, we don't get a ton of golf balls in our, in our yard, but we have neighbors and, you know, I mean, they've got big, huge buckets full and, and they even keep their car right on the driveway, so, and they, I'm not aware of them ever having their windshield knocked out. So, I would like to see the data, but, you know, see what we can do.
Agreed, agreed, sure. Council, anything else? Councilmember Carter?
So, I've heard others do this, so I really want to do it too. So, I just want to give a huge thanks to Chief Seal, now that he's gone, of course. So, my husband played in the fire, fireman's tournament and on Friday night, the pitcher got hit in the chest really hard with the ball, the batter hit it right at him. And so, you know, he was on the ground, we called nine one one and Chief Seal beat the ambulance there. He was the one that showed up and like, you know, gave him the look over and like, you know, advised him and helped him out and then the ambulance came and, you know. But anyway, so I just want to say thank you to Chief Seal and, I mean, obviously he's working really hard and so are all the other firefighters. So, I, you know, I look forward to continuing those conversations to make sure that we're supporting them and, and aren't going on eleven hundred calls or whatever in six, seven months and so. So, if Chief Seal is listening, thank you, otherwise, please extend my thanks to him.
Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mayor. Two sort of elections related things. First of all, I, and I suspect anyone who's watching a council meeting at ten thirty at night probably already knows about these things, but starting this Saturday and then running all of next week, Monday through Friday, are, the city's going to be conducting mock ranked choice voting elections to give the public an example of, of what that looks like, what the ballot might look like and, you know, how it all works out. So, folks are certainly encouraged to participate in those. And then the other piece I wanted to mention is that candidate filing opens tomorrow morning at eight AM, so if you're sitting at home thinking, hey, I can do better than these folks, here's your chance to prove it.
Council, anything else? Councilmember, oh, Councilmember Nelson, I'm sorry, I almost missed you. Councilmember Nelson?
I, yeah, thank you. I was a little surprised that Councilmember Coulter recruiting new members for the council, so. All right. Anyways, the, I just wanted to follow up on Councilmember Lohman's request and, and I, I do think it makes sense to look at the data. I will say, from having played golf courses and not being a great golfer, most of the courses I have seen, both public and private, have a policy that it's up to the golfer to take responsibility for their actions, similar to if your car was parked in the street and somebody hit your car, it wouldn't be up to the city to fix your car, it would be up to that driver to honestly say, hey, I did that and take responsibility for it. The other thing I think important to note is just that the, like an auto glass is usually, I don't know everyone's insurance policy, but it's usually covered no cost by an insurance policy, so, and as the city manager mentioned, if, if the insurance company doesn't believe it's your responsibility to pay, they'll certainly aggressively defend the rights of the policyholder and not, not, the, the insurance companies aren't in the business of paying out if they don't have to. And so, I, I, you know, the gentleman asked about who, who would represent him and that's, that's one of the responsibilities of his insurance companies, represent his interests. And, you know, if, if they have the resources, they have attorneys, they can fight this thing and if they want to, you know, take and disagree with our, our insurance company, that's their right. But I do think the data is merit, is merit to take a look at and how often this happens and things of that, I do think we actually got a little bit of that data previously, but, you know, the bottom line, somebody did this and they didn't take responsibility for it. And that's unfortunate, but the city, the city can't tell people to be decent and honest. I mean, it'd be easier if we could just pass an ordinance and tell people to do that, but we can't. So, you know, to put all of the taxpayers, if they have to pay for these things, I, I don't think, my opinion is, I, I don't think that's the right way to go. I think the right way to go is to look at if there's a widespread problem, to mitigate it. And I think Councilmember Lohman was, was right in that part of it, so.
Agreed, yeah.
I hope somebody has something more upbeat than what I just said.
How's this for upbeat? With our business done, I'd look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion by Councilmember Carter, second by Councilmember Martin, to adjourn this evening, no further discussion. Ms. EichelDinger?
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Lohman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye.
Six zero, we are adjourned, thank you much. Thanks to my colleagues, thanks to the staff, I saw more of the staff tonight than we've seen in a long time, it was good to see everybody, thanks to everybody who's watched tonight, and thanks to Brianna EichelDinger who is helping us out one more time here, thank you all very much. Have a good day tomorrow, we'll see you all, thanks much.